This is the Village Riverside's Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, February 15, 2018. The time is seven o'clock. Please call the roll.
President Salles.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Jiza.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Sudaby.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley, and hopefully joining us momentarily is Trustee Lumsden.
Yes, please join us for the pledge.
President Salles.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome. Trustee Lumsden.
Should we let him pledge now?
I'm gonna buy myself one.
He's a veteran. I think he's done enough pledging to pledge. So, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming to see us tonight. Those of you watching at home, if you are here this evening and you'd like to make a comment to the board at any time, I just ask that you be recognized by me and that you make your comment from the podium, so that folks can hear and see what you say at home. If you are here for a particular agenda item, I would suggest that you wait until we get to that item before you make your comments. That way you can hear the staff report first, and then we can all engage in a dialogue about whatever particular interest you have tonight. So, having said that, is there anyone who would like to address the board before we get started? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the officers' report. The only thing I have this evening is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a Class C restaurant liquor license to La Estancia, our new Mexican restaurant here in town. The board has received the background information, so I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve a Class C liquor license for La Estancia. By Mr. Jiza.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Ballerine. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Sudaby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Motion carries. Village Manager's report.
I just wanted to update residents. Since our last board meeting, we've had some considerable snowfall. Just to provide residents with an update, we had nine straight days of measurable snowfall, including 8.3 inches received on February 8 through February 9, and four inches received February 10 through 11. I wanted to recognize those employees. Not a lot of people realize, we don't have very many staff in our public works department. We have six full-time employees with two supervisors. So, I would like to thank Director Bailey, Superintendent Carraco, Joe Manganiello, Jesus Moran, Dan Tab, Mike Collins, Jerry Norman, and Mike Jurzuski. Also additionally, I wanted to update the board with regard to equipment that was recently purchased over the last couple of years that was utilized during that snowfall. We utilized the Peterbilt plow truck, the Polaris Brutus utility vehicle, the grasshopper zero-turn mower with front mounting attachments, the Caterpillar 930M wheeled end loader, and also the BOSS snowplow packages that were purchased with our water vehicles. So, as you can tell, we've utilized our vehicles extensively and equipment to make sure that everything that we're purchasing, we're able to utilize across different seasons, not just during the summertime, but also for snow events. It's extremely important, given the limited staffing and limited equipment that we're able to procure on an annual basis. So, I wanted to thank them. I additionally wanted to thank, really Superintendent Carraco, because he not only works for our public works department, he also is a battalion chief in our fire department, and when he wasn't doing related duties for public works, he was also working fireship duty, because we wanted to make sure that the firehouse was manned when, especially during these snow events. So, it was very crucial for his assistance during this time. Additionally, just the fire department, who is helping clear village employee parking lots while public works was out clearing the streets. So, thank you very much to those employees who assisted during those times. That's all I have.
I second that. They did a great job. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda, and for those of you who have not enjoyed this little ritual before, I have to read all of them to you. So, the consent agenda is as follows: Ratify voucher list of bills February 1, 2018. List of bills February 15, 2018. Approve the Village Board trustee regular meeting minutes January 18. File and review the following Parks and Recreation Board regular meeting minutes November 20. Planning and zoning commission special meeting and public hearing December 19. Preservation Commission regular meeting minutes December 14. Preservation Commission special meeting minutes January 22, 2018. Community Development Department monthly report January 2018. The Community Development Department annual report of 2017. The Fire Department monthly report January 2018. The acceptance of the 2018 budget document, which is included in a separate packet for the trustees, and a resolution of the Village of Riverside, Illinois authorizing the village manager to enter into an agreement and issue a purchase order to Christopher B. Burke Engineering for Phase II design engineering for the Riverside Metro Station Pedestrian Improvement Project for an amount not to exceed $39,800, and a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a professional design engineering services agreement with Christopher B. Burke Engineering in the amount of $64,050 for the 2018 STP improvements, Surface Transportation Program improvements to portions of Forest Avenue, Herrick Road, and Berry Point Road. Are there any items that anyone needs to remove for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve.
Come on.
By Ms. Peters.
Second.
By Mr. Pollak. Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Sudaby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none, this is where I would ask consideration of the board to reorder the agenda a bit, so we can free up some seating here. I would ask that we move consideration A up to this point. Any objection? So, this is a consideration of a zoning variation from the residential bulk regulations in Table 3 of Section 1045, pork regulations, porch regulations, and Section 1073 H5, and non-conforming buildings and structures regulations in Section 10104C of the Riverside zoning ordinance to allow an unenclosed porch addition to a non-conforming enclosed porch and associated walkway at 173 Gage Road. Director, act.
So, subject property, 173 Gage, is zone R1A, single-family residence, and the existing home has an enclosed front porch that encroaches approximately eight and a half feet into the required street yard. The existing porch has two entrances, one on each side of the porch, and the petitioner would like to remove those two entrances, including their associated steps, and create one single entrance that would face the street. The new entrance would open to about a three-by-13-foot covered landing. This covered landing would be considered an unenclosed porch. The proposed porch will encroach an additional three and a half feet into the street yard with a setback of approximately 13 feet at its closest point. The enclosed front porches are not allowed to encroach into the required street yard, therefore it's considered non-conforming. In Section 1073 H5, it does not allow buildings with existing porches that have been previously enclosed and encroached into the required street yard to be eligible for our new encroaching porches, open porches allowances. So, therefore a variance is needed in order for them to build this new structure. Additionally, our nonconformities chapter restricts additions to nonconforming structures, so additionally the variance is needed from that section as well. In order to build the porch addition, they also need a variation from our bulk requirements. They currently exceed their maximum impervious surface area of 50% of the lot. The existing properties' impervious surfaces are well over 50%. Even with the removal of the steps on the side and the removal of the driveway, which they are proposing to sort of offset some of the increase in impervious surface for the porch and the associated walkway, they would still be over that 50% mark, and so they would still require the variation from the bulk standards. At the public hearing that was held on January 24, the owner's architect, who is here this evening and can answer any questions that you might have, explained that the house had previously been a duplex and had been converted into a single-family home at some point, thus kind of the two entrances that you have on that porch. And so, each of these leads to an existing driveway on either side of the house, and neither of these exterior doors has a landing. The owners would like to have an exterior front door, as I said, that faces the street, and then has a landing that would be required per our building code. So, building code requires if you have an exterior door that goes out, it has to go to a minimum three-by-three landing. So, they are hoping to do this. However, what they're proposing to do is a three-by-13-covered porch in the front. So, the commissioner members stated, kind of questioned why the architect chose to put the porch on the east half of the front of the house, and he explained that the west side would have been preferable because that's closer to their driveway. However, that would put it closer to the front property line because it does run on an angle. So, putting it on the west half of the house allows to have that greater setback of 13 feet versus probably something maybe more around nine or 10 feet if it were on the other side, other half of the house, I should say. They also asked if other layouts had been considered, and the architect explained that there was a lot of things that really weren't feasible, just due to their cost and kind of how the house had originally been set up as a duplex. So, there was some complexities with that in trying to work around some other options. Let's see. They spent a lot of time also discussing whether this was a porch or a stoop. So, it kind of went through that discussion as well. Given the size of the proposed structure and the fact that it's covered in its entirety, staff did make the call that this would be considered a porch rather than a stoop with an awning. The Planning and Zoning Commission went through the standards that are required to go through variation, and they did recommend approval of the impervious surface variance. They felt that with them offsetting by taking out the driveway, this was a net positive and would be a benefit to the area and to that property by allowing the impervious surface variation. However, they did recommend denial of the variation for the porch encroachment and nonconforming addition. So, this was, the trouble was finding that there was other options that could be utilized that would not require as great a variation or perhaps a variation at all. After that vote, the denial vote was six to one. They also made a recommendation that they wanted to let you know that had this been considered a stoop, they might have considered that variance differently. So, after the public hearing, staff and village attorney discussed this a little bit more, and we recommend the proposed structure continue to be defined as a porch. In reviewing the defined terms involved, proposed structure seems more like a porch than a stoop. Purpose of a stoop is primarily just to serve as an access platform to a building. The proposed structure is 13 feet wide, much wider than necessary to just serve as a primary access point. So, our recommendation would still be to consider this a porch and the variation as defined. You have the different terms defined in your staff report if you want that for reference as you discuss this further. Since this is a negative recommendation, if the board disagrees with the Planning and Zoning Commission, you can direct staff to draft an ordinance approving the proposed variations for the board to consider at our next board meeting, or if you want, you can make a motion to concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation tonight. So, the petitioner is here, along with his architect, to answer any questions that you have. You have a copy of their application and the findings of fact from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm also here to answer any questions that you have.
So, I suggest that we have our discussion before we decide on a motion to be made. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, discussion?
What would be categorized as a stoop in width?
Typically, a stoop is not going to be maybe much wider than five or six feet. Typically, a stoop is going to be right in an entryway. It's going to be a little bit wider than the door. Sometimes they're wide enough to allow for the door to kind of open, like a storm door to open their full width. So, typically by code, it's a minimum three-by-three landing, but typically they're probably more like five feet, five feet wide, maybe six feet.
See, I can't have permanent roof.
Yeah, typically they're considered an open structure, so they don't have a roof over them.
But, I mean, I look at my front stoop, which has a attached structure that's built into the roof of my house, or built into the front of my house.
Okay.
Doesn't have any pillars down the sides, so it would never be enclosed. I consider that an awning, and I consider my porch, my stoop. You know, you would consider it porch because it's wider, but I would consider, I mean, I look at this, I look at the drawings, and, you know, I feel that if he was to follow, I don't necessarily disagree that you're saying it's a porch, but I think for architectural integrity of this property, it has to be wider than three feet. I mean, it's just, it's going to be this duplex house with a tiny entrance or a tiny exit. I think that, I mean, I look at the front of my house, which isn't as wide as the front of that house, and my stoop is eight and a half, nine feet. So, I don't think 13 feet is out of line as a stoop for this type of house, especially at that depth. You're not going to put chairs on there, so it's not really a porch.
Right, it's really only about three and a half feet.
So, I think we would be, I think we would be doing a disservice to the home and a disservice to the architect and the architectural intelligent, architectural integrity of this home not to allow proportionate stoop to be built on this house.
Other comments?
And I think that's really the way a lot of commissioners, I mean, because it was six to one that if we would have called it a stoop, or if they got the definition of stoop, they would add a problem. They were searching for the same way, but nobody really went down the architectural integrity path. And I think we really are, I mean, considering a village that pays attention to its architecture, I think we should be paying close attention to our architectural integrity, especially when it comes to this type of stuff.
Right. Their concern was with this being considered a porch and having just recently approved porch regulations and kind of made a line in the sand, so to speak, about how far a porch can go into a street yard. They were a little bit reluctant to move forward with something with as close of a setback as this was, so.
Mr. Pollak?
I agree with Trustee Ballerine again. And I think you, twice in a row.
Twice in a row.
But, there's, but, I think, I think your arguments are for a text amendment, not a variation. There's nothing in there about anything unique really about the property. And so, maybe we need to dig a little deeper here and see if we need to once again revise our definitions. You know, the definitions are clear. This is a stoop, not a porch. In our laypeople's terms, it may not be a porch. It may be a stoop, but that doesn't matter. It's the definitions of the code that matter. So, maybe we need to look at this a little bit closer in a different perspective. But in terms of the variations, there was two recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission. First one was to approve the impervious coverage variation. I actually disagree with the planning commission on that, even more so than on the other aspects of it. I think they should be allowed to do what they're doing. I absolutely think that that trade-off is a net positive for the village, but I see no reason why we should let them do it and then tell everyone else you can't do it. So, I think if we want to amend the code and say, if you reduce the impervious coverage, you could move things around, if we think we want to approve this. Because, quite frankly, in terms of a variation, this is strictly financial. They could take out the driveway, put in impervious pavers, and be in compliance and not need that variation. So, therefore, they don't meet the standard of a variation not being for financial gain because it's clearly, they could comply if they spent more money on it. I'm not suggesting they do. I'm suggesting we amend the code so that everyone can do this, if we think it's appropriate. And then in terms of the setback variation, I just, I don't really see anything unique about this property that relates directly to that setback variation. You know, it is unique that it was a duplex and it was converted, but we have lots of single-family homes with side entryways and not a front stoop. I think they could also, if they wanted a front stoop, there's ways they could do it without needing a variation. So, under a variation, I can't support either request for variation.
On that point, Mr. Randall?
Yes.
Can you, can you see a way to satisfy what Trustee Pollak is talking about? Is there a way, a reasonable way, to get below the impervious requirement?
To get below the impervious requirement?
I know you're already taking out the one driveway, but you're still.
There's a lot of paving that would have to be removed. There's an auxiliary structure, or ancillary structure that was in the back that you would have to take down or reconfigure the deck, you know, all of which, you know, the client was not responsible for. He bought it in that condition. So, you know, in the process of going through this, about the time that we were going through all these discussions was around Halloween, and, you know, a lot of these smaller porches, you would see kids going up and down, and you could just see, you're just waiting for the time where somebody falls because there's just not enough room. So, as we were designing this, we were looking at the structure of the building. There's three piers across the front. We spanned the porch or stoop, you know, from one pier to the other, because it made sense architecturally. To reduce it was kind of, made it kind of a weird shape. And then to cover it, you know, provide some protection, we extended the eaves out two feet from where they're currently at. So, we didn't think that would be that big of an extension. You know, it then projects three feet from the front face, but it depends on where you define where the front face is. But from the current drip line, it's actually only 24 inches out. So, as we were talking through this, the notion of how much impervious surface is covered, covered was a discussion of ours. And he's a, well, we can simply just get rid of that other driveway, and that should offset this pretty well. And I think the net is a reduction of, what, 400 square feet?
I believe so, yeah.
It's a total reduction of 400 square feet, even though we're putting some back. So, so we're trying to do something that actually helps, you know, the water surface, and it was actually suggested that we take out the curb cut and the apron, which, you know, they're fine with, yes. Can we talk to my client for a minute? And, you know, that's going to further reduce how much pavement is out here on the street. So, all those, we tried, we went through six iterations just to address that point. Anybody who knows me, when we do these things, we go through multiple iterations before we try to land on ones that make the most sense. So, this was the one that we thought made the most sense, made the, you know, to his point, was the most, kept the architectural integrity. We didn't, we didn't break the eve line with another slope that came down further. We were just really trying to do as minimal of a coverage as possible, so that when packages are delivered, they're not just sitting on the porch in the rain.
So, Mr. Pollak, what, were you making a suggestion with regard to the impervious variation?
Well, what I'm suggesting is that if we think what they're doing is net positive, we should let everyone do it. I, you know, every time you grant a variation, you're saying, we're going to, you know, we're making an exception for one person, but then we're going to ask our staff to turn around and tell everyone else they can't do that. Why? I mean, if it's good enough for this property, because there's nothing unique about this property in that regard, in regards to the impervious coverage. We have lots of properties that are nonconforming in terms of impervious coverage. I don't think it's right to say, yeah, they can all come and get a variation too. Why put them through that? Why not just amend the code so that if, you know, some ratio, if you reduce it by 10%, you could move stuff around, or if you don't have a net gain, you could move stuff around. Just looking out to be fair, I, otherwise, if we're not willing to do that, we should not let this property owner do it, is my point.
See, I hear what you're saying, but I also think, I think it is sort of unique. And the reason it's unique to me is because it was originally a duplex, and there's that driveway that's on the side there. That's, removing that, I think, actually adds to the design of the block. By removing that, I think it elevates the aesthetics of what we're doing. So, I, from a unique perspective, I actually do think it's unique. And it's funny because I was driving around, trying to look at other houses. First, I was confused as to why you were putting it on the side. It's nice to hear that you're moving it over there because of the 13-foot setback. And I was driving around a little bit, and there's a house over on Blooming Bank where they just renovated. It used to be a covered porch, and they put the stairs on the side. So, when you see what it, what the final product's going to look like, I mean, I use that as sort of an example. It's an open, so when I saw that, it helped me understand it. And then, I think Mr. Randall just mentioned something that I didn't think about. Everyone knows I'm a big safety guy. The side entry, yeah, I didn't even think about the safe, from a safety perspective with kids and stuff, just unloading things and going up and down those three or four stairs that are there. I think that kind of makes it a little bit unique. I know there's a lot of side-entry homes, but to me, I think there are some unique elements here. I don't disagree that we should revisit it, but I think right now, just looking at this as it is, to me, it is unique from that perspective. I think the overhang doesn't make it a porch, back to what the commissioners were saying. I don't think that having the overhang makes it a porch. I mean, I would define it as a stoop. I mean, I think of a stoop, I think of stairwell in New York City at a gray stone, right? I mean, that's kind of what this reminds me of. That's just me. Yeah, and to that point, when I was reading through the code and we were putting together the application, I actually filled out the application for an awning and stupid stairs because that's the way I viewed it. Because there's no permanent structures that are coming down to support that overhang. We're just simply extending the eaves out. We're putting some decorative brackets up there. We could easily eliminate those, you know, because they're not doing a whole lot structurally. So, you know, to that point, that's the way I interpreted it based on the code and what I know from my studies in architectural history of what would be considered a canopy versus an awning versus, you know, a covered porch. So, I was kind of surprised to hear it was re-characterized and classified as such. But, anyway, but to that, to Mr. Pollak's point, I mean, I do think if, if there's a net positive in terms of reducing impervious surface in the, in the village, it should be something permissible.
I, you know, I get that.
And I guess, you know, to that point.
Let's say, for the sake of, and I don't know if this is true or not, let's say for the sake of argument, if you put permeable pavers into the existing driveway, and if you did that, then you would meet the requirement.
Sure.
Is that something that then, since we are so concerned about water runoff and storm management, is that something that we should require? Because to Trustee Pollak's point, that's really just a financial consideration. That is not an undue hardship consideration under the definition of undue hardship.
Sure. Well, and to that point, we're actually doing a project over here on Riverside and doing that very same thing, because it actually turned out to be less expensive to do the impervious surface than to do a new decorative concrete driveway and parking pad. So, I mean, I think the numbers of those things are getting to the point where, you know, it's not a large economic hardship, if, of a hardship at all. So, I mean, as long as you're trying to reduce impervious surface, I think it's a great thing. So, anyway.
For me, it's the definition of stoop versus porch, what we've been talking about. And I envision a porch as a place that I can put a chair out on and sit, and I think I could do that here. I have a porch that's just like this. I'm calling it a porch, right off my front door as well, that's three feet wide, and I have two tiny chairs smooshed in there. So, that's, that's why I view it as a porch. Now, if we could have better clarity about what a stoop is, maybe dimension-wise, I mean, most doors are a standard size width, so I would think that there is room to potentially think about a definition of stoop, having a dimension aspect to it. And if it goes up to 13, it goes up to 13, but I think that that's where I would need that reassurance, that a 20-foot isn't going to be considered a stoop, or a, you know, for instance, if they took it across the hall... whole house, I don't know how long that is, but say 26 feet, where does that stop? And I need, I would need that line in order to, to make that decision.
Mr. Brown, do you have a thought on that?
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I look at it as, as a, you know, I, I hate when we pick numbers just to pick numbers, you know, where we say something's gonna be, I'm, I consider stoop eight feet. Well, you know, not all houses in this town are built alike. And I think we need to, you know, and I, I, I think we should, you know, take, I think we should look at, again, the architectural integrity of the home. And, and we want to be able to come out of this without doing any damage to either the homeowner or to our codes. So I think that's, that's an important balance that we need to, we need to walk. And I, I think, you know, we need to figure out whether it's a text amendment or what, but, I mean, we, you know, it just does not do this home justice to pick an arbitrary number and say it has to be three by three.
And at that point, I mean, I know a lot of us watched the hearing. It, it, the 13 feet wasn't arbitrary. It was decided because of where the columns are. We're just trying to use the existing columns as support.
I don't know if that's arbitrary or if that's, if that's architectural.
I think that's a very good architectural decision. And I think that that's where, obviously, everybody knows I'm not afraid to use the variance card at all. So I think that that's why people bring stuff to us, so we can use our common sense. We're all sitting around here saying this is a common sense approach to it. It's been designed by one of our own architects that we're proud of here in town, and we're getting hung up on verbiage. I agree with you, Doug, that we, the precedents that we set, and we need to continually work to make text amendments to make everything fair. I mean, this is the kind of place where I would like to, us to use a variance and then we take the mission to go back and change the text to make it match what we just varied to, so it's fair and reasonable for everybody. I know that the process of that and the sequencing of that, we, we disagree on that a little bit. But there's nothing here that I see that doesn't better improve our village. There's no safety issues other than enhancements. The roof overhang is that far more. I mean, two feet, that's all you said that you went out on the eve, right? That's not a big deal amongst neighbors from my perspective. Right? If we said if we had a text amendment, we would allow it. We all agree that we could live with a text amendment. Why hold this one up? Why delay progress? Let's move forward, give them the variance, and then work with our staff to get the, the verbiage in our code to match it, especially in light that our, our wonderful P&amp;Z group admitted that if it was defined as a stoop, they would probably push it forward anyway. That's my position there.
I think there, there's two additional points we haven't talked about. One is the current stairs are not to code. So to build them to code, I think, makes it impossible to just extend them out. It would go three feet into the driveway, right? So I don't think that that's a solution. I think what they can do by right, which would be a three-foot stoop with a metal awning, obviously, I think we all agree that's not a desirable outcome. I've been the most conservative on these determinations, and, and that's primarily because I'm concerned about precedent. I think that this home is very unique, and there's multiple practical difficulties and hardships. So as reluctant as I am to buck the Planning and Zoning Commission on here, and I was there and I saw how they struggled with it, I think we all agree this is a desirable outcome. I would support the variance with the understanding that we are going to revisit the definition of porch at a later date. And I don't know, what is your timing of construction for the?
Well, if it's, if it's approved, then we will proceed to finish up construction drawings and hopefully get started this spring. If it's not, we're back at the drawing board, so to speak. We're picking, pulling out one of the other options, which it seems like we'd still be coming back here for a discussion about variance due to the impervious surface and we'd be here with the same discussion, basically.
Yeah, so it, it sounds to me like that there is a consensus that we, one, we want a determinate, a descended back to, to Planning and Zoning with regard to this porch stoop definition, quite apart from this variation. It's a separate discussion. And also, the net sum issue with regard to reducing impervious surface also needs to be discussed. With those two things set aside, would someone like to make a motion to disagree with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation and to direct staff to draft an ordinance approving the variation?
Someone.
Mr. Baller. Second right, Mr. Lumsen. Further discussion? Please call the.
I wonder if the consensus from the board that they are, they will consider those text amendments.
I think we've got that.
Is that, okay.
I kind of feel like we're doing this variance on the contingent that we all go back and do that.
Got it.
So to make sure we're clear, an I vote is to disagree with the BDC and to direct staff to draft the ordinance.
Correct.
Everybody clear on that?
I just want to, one, one thing, because it, when the PZ, when the Planning and Zoning Commission talked about the driveway, I, they never really said the curb cut. That is for sure gonna be gone, because that.
That was actually suggested by.
I remember, yeah, that Doug.
And I had discussed with them.
So that's definitely going.
Wow, sure.
Staff would make them remove it. If you're gonna eliminate a driveway code says it has to be, the associated curb cut has to be removed as well, so.
Okay. We, we do, we say that because there are a few in town where they wasn't, believe it or not, so it's not.
Nice place for a tree.
Please call the roll.
Trusty Pollak.
Aye.
Trusty Jesus.
Aye.
Trusty Lumsden.
Aye.
Trusty Baller.
Aye.
Trusty Sedgwick.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you Director Adams. Thank you guys for coming in. We're gonna have a few more chairs over here, free to, for some. Unless you want to stay. Let me just ask for the folks who are here. Is anybody here to talk about the Point B Communications? Or the community programming guidelines? Or the social media guidelines? Or the community garden? Okay. So with the Board's permission, since everyone is here for this, we're, we're gonna move up the discussion of the Special Recreation Association membership. And Mr. Malkey, if you would like to take over. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna have our staff introduce the topic, and then we'd like to hear from you, and then the Board will have a discussion. We're not making any decisions tonight. This is an initial discussion, just to get all the facts and issues out and air them out. So that's kind of what we're gonna do this evening. Director Malkey.
Thank you President Sells, Village Board, Village Manager Francis, and all of the residents in attendance. Before I get started, I would just like to say that so much of what we do, not only in the recreation department, but in the village itself, is kind of focused and driven by community feedback and demand for programs, participation in programs. So to see, you know, I, I wish that I had the opportunity, I'll, I'll be here 15 years in April, and I wish I had the opportunity to meet and speak with you before this evening to craft some of our programming. That's in addition to special recreation, but across the board. So I guess the kind of call to action would be, so all residents are aware that whether it's special recreation programming, excuse my voice, programming in general, that our doors are open. This is your community, and we want your feedback. That's the only way we can truly craft and serve the needs of the community. Excuse me. You have the Agenda History Sheet in front of you. The Parks and Recreation Department was contacted by a resident about joining a Special Recreation Association. The department informed them of the programs that the department already offered and explained that although the department supports recreation opportunities, that we did not have the funds to join an SRA. The department has always offered programs for residents, residents with special needs, and in 2015 created ROAR, Riverside Opportunities for Adaptive Recreation, to offer more specialized programming. ROAR provides a wider array of recreational opportunities for the developmentally disabled residents that concentrate on their needs and provide adaptive equipment as required. These programs also allow for peer interaction and enable a network of support for parents. Offerings range from sensory and creative classes to social events and field trips. The Board was provided with a, a representation of the programs that we've offered since 2015. So the, what's in our brochure now are just the current offerings. And to be honest, what we're offering now is the culmination of all of the past programs. We just had our first ROAR class go last week with three participants, which was under the minimum. But obviously, we let the class go because we're trying to build participation. I credit that to awareness of the topic itself, but we've also worked with District 96 to enhance and promote the programming. So a lot of the programs now that you see are not all encompassing of what we've offered in the past, but that is based on the feedback we've received, what people would sign up for. The department also has a longstanding relationship with the SRA Gateway. Under this relationship, residents can register for any program through Gateway, and if it is a program that the department also offers, the department will reimburse any non-resident fees. Residents can also register for any of the department's programs and camps, and the department will, will work to secure a one-on-one aid if needed. Unfortunately, these initiatives have been largely unused. Aids are secured at the request of residents, and that's for any of our programs. The Parks and Recreation Board discussed this topic at its November 20th meeting, and although supportive of the concept, it did note that the department did not have the funding. You've also been provided a table representing three of the more popular SRAs in the area. That table is based on communication that was acquired directly from the agencies. The Board has also forwarded those communications, so you can, you can see the conversations as well. This Agenda History Sheet and that table, again, is not necessarily meant to be all-encompassing information. I would imagine, based on tonight's feedback and discussion, that there will be more areas we'll have to research, but I wanted to provide a baseline for the Village Board to at least begin the discussion. Joining an SRA was, was never really financially feasible through the department, but we also, we always recognized the importance of offering special recreation program, programming. That's why we sought out the agreement and the relationship with Gateway and also created ROAR. Horseback riding and swimming, other, other programs of that nature are, are not something that the department in itself offers, but we could, those could be acquired through work with an SRA.
So I just had one question about your chart. Under each, under each, you have the WSSRA, C-Spar, and Gateway, and then you have a listing of park districts and recreation departments under each one.
Yes.
So if, if you go, let's just pick one, if you go through C-Spar then, the, the program offerings would be at one of the villages that is listed underneath that column? So it would be a member, it would be a member village, which is where the, the program would be offered?
Correct. Part of the agreement when you join an association is use of your facility for programming. So they, they essentially program at the member facilities.
Because none of these, none of these programs actually have their own facilities. They're more of a, they, they take their member communities and utilize their, their facilities.
Right.
So somebody has to, when you become a member, they can choose whether you're, you're a good fit, whether you have facilities they, they want or they need or whatever. They, am I, I'm understanding.
Yeah, they would definitely look at that, and it's, some of it is unique to your facility. So obviously, if you have a swimming pool at your disposal, they would want to offer swimming at your facility. It's not necessarily unique to each facility either. They may offer swimming at three of the member associations because they have access to a pool. I know one of the, I believe, C-Spar and WSSRA offer ice skating because their members have an ice rink. So it's, it's based on what each member has to offer, but you, depending on the program you want to participate in, you would have to go to one of the member facilities. That's why I included not only their members, but also the distances, because, you know, as we discussed at the Parks and Rec Board meeting, obviously, convenience and distance is a factor for parents. So I wanted to include what, what that would be, what that would entail based on the program you register for.
Any other questions for Mr. Malkey before we hear from our residents? Okay. I'm sure we'll be back with you. So this is your opportunity now. We have all of the emails and letters that you sent to us. We've all read them. We've all studied them. But if you would like to make additional comments to us, now is the time. Anyone like to speak to us? Please. Yes, please.
I'm Rory Donovan. I live at 3D at Kent Road. What, obviously, there's a lot of parents here in support of this. And what I, a few things I want you to realize is that what you see here is not all of the special needs parents in this community. Some of these parents, it's not easy to talk about their situation as a parent of a child with special needs. You don't necessarily want your very difficult and at times heartbreaking world out there for public consumption. So while some of us are here and some will, will choose to talk and some won't, please know there are many other parents and families that feel the same way as those that are in this room do. It's just hard at times to share such a really sensitive topic in a forum that's publicized on TV and whatnot. So that's, I want you to know that there's more than just what you see in this room. And I also want to help you understand what life is like as a parent to a child with special needs. We spend hours and days going to doctor's appointments, therapies, surgeries, and that's another reason why some of them can't be here, because they may have had an exhausting day of therapy and three hours of being refitted for braces, which was what happened to my son last night. And if that had happened today, I promise you, I wouldn't be here because this world is exhausting. And our, our children's needs are not any really different in terms of what they're looking for than any of your children or a typically developing child, or my other son who's typical and nine, is that they just want an opportunity to play basketball or play baseball or, you know, do a STEM class or do something where they could socialize and then learn something as well. And the opportunities that the Riverside Parks and Rec has provided should be applauded, that they took the time to seek out opportunities. But as Ron mentioned, wouldn't it be nice if we had all actually talked about what we needed? Because what's in those programmings is not often, if you looked at them, are not things that an 11-year-old boy is gonna want to do. And the offerings are once, um, once an entire, like, semester, if you will, for 45 minutes. And these children, as your own children may experience, you know, are in baseball, basketball, do extracurriculars through tryout teams at the middle school level. Those are things our kids can't do, only because they need more support. So if they were given an aid or an opportunity or even a peer buddy program for a baseball program here in Riverside, those, that's what we need. And a special recreation association is equipped to provide those things and knows how to handle our children and work with them. So I just want, want you to know that there, the needs are not unlike a typical kid. They just need an opportunity where it can actually work for them. It's really hard when our 11-year-old said to my, my husband just last weekend, I have no friends. And it brought my husband to tears, and I've been grappling with that for years, and he's just not realizing it because he was out with his brother's baseball team. And he's like, I have nobody. And this, a special recreation association would give our children the opportunity to meet other peers that are typical to them and possibly, there's no promises, but possibly forge even just one or two friendships. forge even just one or two friendships. So I just want you to understand that this, this, the last thing I'll say is this world as a special needs parent is extremely isolating. If it were not for the fact that I happen to have a nine-year-old typically developing child, I probably wouldn't have 95% of the friends I have here in Riverside because those friendships are forged on the soccer fields, at the baseball stands, at the playdates that happen after school. And my son Cameron has experienced very little of those things outside of being merely a spectator. So this is a community that prides itself on tight-knit, close community that we all love and adore of only, you know, 8,000 people. And I feel super sad to think of how alone I would feel if I didn't have another child and wouldn't have met all the wonderful people I have met in this community and then I feel even sadder when I think about how my 11-year-old feels and how alone he feels. So that's what I would share with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rory. Need one else? Please. And if I just, one question, kind of one general question I have and maybe some of you can answer this when you're up here, is, you know, it's my understanding, I understand what you were just referring to with the ROAR program, but my understanding is, is that, is our Parks and Recreation Department has been offering programming through Gateway for, for years in terms of a reimbursement situation. And I'm just curious if any of you have had any experience with that program and how you would describe it? So, sir, please.
So, good evening. My name's Tony Perry. I live at 267 Lawton Road with my wife Kim and our family. We moved here to Riverside about 12 years ago in 2005 after pretty thoughtfully thinking about what community we wanted to raise our family in. We had two children at the time and a third child down the way and really saw this as the place where we wanted to raise our children and sort of put down roots, so to speak. 2005 for us was a big year because it was the year that, I won't look at my wife, that my wife Kim was pregnant with our third child. And it was the year that we found out that that third child had significant health problems. And it was the start of a two-year period that was a two-year period that for us, if you sort of step back and observe it, included dual experiences of, of going through the, being parents of a child, going through multiple hospital stays, multiple operations, multiple emergency room visits. And at the same time, looking at his older siblings who were playing soccer at Harrington Park and doing all sorts of things that are available in our community. And as we've always looked at our youngest child Luke and his development, we have always looked at his intellectual and academic development and also his social emotional development. And in looking at his older siblings, you know, we saw something that isn't rocket science to us all. We saw how much they develop on the soccer fields and in the Little League fields and in scout programs and in all those things that are wonderful things about this community that are happening all over the place in this community. And they're all things that we looked at. We have a very similar experience to what you heard from Murray Dominic where our third son Luke has a very limited set of things to access in this community. So we've always looked at how he grows and develops and in fact, as he's grown and developed, you know, we had this, this path where when he was in the first years of his life, we were told not to expect that he would ever talk and we were told not to expect that he would ever walk in his life. And it's been through passion and love and hard work in which we've really seen a blossoming of a beautiful young child in our son Luke. He's engaged in his school. He's a student at Central School in fifth grade as of this year. And we've engaged in a wonderful environment that has included him in the environment that has helped in not only academically, he's a child that can read now, he's a child that can write some things, he can do some math. But just as importantly, if not more importantly, he's a child that develops socially very significantly in that school district. He has friends there, he has people he interacts with. This is a child who, again, I told you, we were told, "Don't expect he'll walk and don't expect he'll talk." He walks around Central School and he says hello to everybody in that hallway. He gives people high fives all the way around and there's a group of people who kind of informally know him as the mayor of Central School just because of his engaging personality. It's a wonderful ability that he has in, in how engaging a human being he is. But, you know, we have this thing about when the school bell rings and that day ends and he leaves, our experience of the, the resources afforded to him in our community that exist that would keep him from being other than an isolated child like you heard before, is that they are extremely limited. We do not feel that they are present in our community and it's been through hard work on our own and discovering resources on our own where we've crafted engagements for him over time. And we don't think that's right. We think this community wants to be welcoming the needs of all people and wants to help them develop along that social path. So, you know, once we see that leave, it's, it's a gap for us and it's a gap that becomes very visible to us because we've seen our typically developing children and the way that they've engaged in this community and what they've really got out of it. And in a piece that's a bit of an irony for us, you know, we really thoughtfully selected this community as a community we wanted to raise our families in. When we look at the neighboring communities that we didn't select, you know, communities like Brookfield, LaGrange, LaGrange Park, North Riverside, Forest Park, Oak Park, River Forest, Berwyn, Cicero, those are all communities that are actively engaged in special recreation associations and have a much broader wealth of programs available to the children who live in those communities. So as we look at this, that's why we're all here, why you have this turnout of people here, because you have a group of people who do not have that experience that there is a great deal of access to these types of programs in our community. And so we're asking you all as the board today to really take action to change that on behalf of these children in our communities and engage in a special recreation, recreation association with close proximity to our community, because even though we talk about these children as having special needs, they really have many very typical needs. They need to socialize, they need to engage with a peer network, they need that development that happens on those soccer fields and all those different events. So I sincerely thank all of you for your attention to this topic and your time and I'll step away from the podium and let somebody else speak.
Thanks, Bill.
Hi, I'm Lauren Schrammick. We live at 568 Selborn. My husband and I have lived in Riverside almost 10 years. We have two sons. My oldest is in kindergarten and he is non-verbal. So, you know, I'm kind of new to this. We just started looking for activities for him since he was young, but you know, I've already run into challenges. You know, I would love to have my son be on the soccer field playing with the other kids, but I realized, you know, that's, that's not going to happen right now. You know, he might be better off in a class learning how to kick a ball or throw a ball or, you know, just playing with the different, you know, all kind of learning different sports. You know, I've reached out, I've called communities asking about swimming lessons because I would love nothing more than to teach him how to swim. He loves the water. But, you know, finding someone that's comfortable teaching a child that is non-verbal how to swim, you know, I get a lot, I get put on hold, called back when a manager's here. I just keep trying different towns and you, you kind of give up after a while. You know, I learned about a horseback riding program, which is great for a lot of children with sensory issues and I put my son on the waiting list. It took us two years to finally get, to finally get in. And when I signed him up, I was explaining the programs in Burr Ridge, I was explaining, you know, "We live in Riverside, what are the time slots for the, you know, the horseback riding?" Because I wanted to take our time. And I was told, you know, "There's such a large wait. What happens is when there's an opening, we get a call and I can take it or I can leave it." And I said, "Well, my son's in school, you know, what happens if I get a 3:00 time?" And I was told that, "Well, a lot of parents take their kids out of school because they don't want to miss the opportunity." And that to me is a little sad, that that should be the expectation, that I should just drop everything, take my son out of school to, to allow him to horseback ride. But it kind of shows you what people are willing to do. Luckily, we got a Saturday, so I didn't have to deal with that, but that was pure luck. Even when I started, everyone there was telling, you know, "Oh, they never have Saturday openings," you know, so. But just to kind of give you an idea of the hurdles we're kind of expected to go through. I can't imagine, you know, any other parent, you know, of a typical developing child saying, "Okay, yeah, we'll pull him out of school to do hockey. Yeah, that's fine, I'll just drive him every week." You know, it really just shouldn't be this difficult. You know, as it's been mentioned before, our children face challenges every day. You know, they have their, therapy appointments. I actually take my son out of school early once a week to go to therapy in Naperville and I sit there for two hours and then I drive home. And I do that every week because I don't want, you know, I want that therapist and I want him to have that. But I just think sometimes people don't realize everything that you're doing outside of, you know, recreation and activity should be easy. You know, it shouldn't be that much work. It shouldn't be something that takes me 100 phone calls, you know, to make happen. Our children deserve to have a choice of activities. They deserve to have a variety of activities. You know, the Parks and Recreation Board comes out with all these programs and you flip through for all the kids. You know, our children can, can be offered the same type of classes with that amount of selection if we belonged to an SRA. You know, that's the reason they exist. You know, no park district should be expected to come up with this huge variety of programs because they're not going to have the sign up, they're not going to have the turnout. You know, and the, and the SRAs have, you know, teachers, you know, people that are running it that understand our children, understand how to deal with them. You know, I won't have silence when I ask, you know, "Is it okay that, you know, my son's non-verbal?" You know, it's, everyone is accepted and I don't have to kind of go through a lot of explaining and, you know, try and help the process. You know, most communities recognize this, you know, as we heard, you know, North Riverside, all these, Countryside, Burr Ridge, you know, River Forest, there's actually hundreds of communities in Illinois that belong to SRAs. Riverside is actually in the minority because we don't. So, you know, we're not asking for the world here, we're just asking for the norm, you know, what everyone else has. And I find it interesting that our community is part of LADZI, the Special Education Co-op. You know, we obviously recognize as a community, it makes sense to join resources with LADZI to educate our children. Why wouldn't we do the same with special recreation? It's, it's basically the same concept. A bunch of communities get together and use the services that are already there. You know, and finally, just more, more importantly, you know, our children deserve this. You know, let's show that Riverside is a community that wants the best for all of its residents, you know, especially the little ones that are often, you know, forgotten. Thank you.
First of all, congratulations on getting into the horseback class.
Thank you.
That's probably the most important, most popular class out of all of them.
Yeah.
What, how did you, did you go through Gateway to get into that?
No, I did not. I went just directly, I actually did not even know about Gateway, but the, the interesting thing about Gateway though, I mean, I don't know if we really have a partnership because Gateway is one of the few SRAs that non-members are allowed to sign up. So really, you know, we're a non-member, so we can sign up, but the, the cost for that is usually, you know, three times, you know, double or, you know, whatever, what they charge for members. So, no, I just went on my own and signed up and, but, but the thing that would be nice if we were part of an SRA, you know, I could see that in the, in the booklet, you know, look it up and, and actually sign up and not have to wait two years.
Well, I, I think, I, what I hear, belonging to an SRA or not belonging to SRA, the wait for the horseback riding is two years. But let's get back to the resident, non-resident.
Yeah.
If, I know that we have always paid the difference for programs that we offer here in Riverside. I mean, if we would make that whole Gateway brochure available to the residents of Riverside and, and somehow figure out how to cover the differences between a resident and non-resident, is that something that would be interesting if you had Gateway as a full, as a, as a full-time?
I mean, I, I guess that's, that's asking to decide, you know, whether we want to go with Gateway or whether we want to go with C-Spar or whether we want to go with WesRA. Since I, you know, my son hasn't actually done any of those, I'm not a good person to, you know, talk on the pros and cons of, of either program, but I know people feel strongly one way or another. You know, obviously location is a factor, programs offered are also a factor. You know, where your classmates of your children, you know, who are your children with at school? Who potential, so it would make sense for who they're with at school, that would be the communities that you would want to sign up with, you know, with the SRA. So, but like for example, though, my son is, goes to school through LADZI, so he might be in school with children from LaGrange, LaGrange Park, you know, Darien, North Riverside, it varies. You know, of course, but I think that, you know, my child might be in the minority, you know? I think a lot of children are in the District 96, you know, with other children in, you know, North Riverside or neighboring communities.
Or Brookfield.
Or Brookfield, yeah.
Both of those.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. And yeah, Brookfield is part of C-Spar, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and just, just, no, that's okay. It's not, no, I don't want to keep picking, but just as we're talking about this, so one of the things, as I was reading all of the communications we were getting, one of the complications that I saw was the difference in desires about which, let me lay back up. I don't think that anybody has to convince anybody up here that we want to offer these services. I don't think, I, I'm pretty confident that I speak for everybody up here that we agree with everything I've heard so far. The question is, how do we provide them? And as you can see in this, in this chart that staff has produced, there's a wide range of, of cost variation, although there's not really a wide range necessarily in terms of program offerings. So, you know, to, to Trustee Valerie's point, if, if the village was to open up the entire Gateway catalog of programming and do the reimbursement, we basically could provide all of the programming that is being requested at a fraction of the cost of the, of a technical membership in an SRA. So, you know, we, we got some letters that were very specific about, you know, Westra. That was the one that was particularly wanted. And we got others that were very specific about C-Spar and Gateway. And I honestly don't know how a government makes that determination. So as I listened to all this, what I'm trying to, and kind of really I think this is how I think about all services in town, how do we, how do we maximize the services in the most cost-effective manner for our residents? That's always the goal. So, and that's why I asked earlier, have you had experience with, with Gateway through our Parks and Rec Department? Because I know we've been offering, you know, programming, although it has been limited to programs that, that we offer. But to Trustee Valerie's point, if we were to open it up, I mean, according to what staff did, really the only thing that I see different here is WesRA offers golf and ice skating, whereas, you know, and then Gateway offers basically the same kind of things that everybody else offers. So I'd like to hear your thoughts about that and how, as your representatives, how do we craft something when we have countervailing desires for different agencies?
Can I, one, here's one thing, and I agree with, with President Sells that everyone on this board wants to do something, I hope. I've had the opportunity to speak to quite a few of the people in the room here over the past two or three weeks and we had a meeting, we sat down at the library, we talked a lot about things. And I, frankly, I've learned a lot about things that, that, that I didn't know. I think that one of the primary, hopefully more people get there and speak about this, but I think that one of the primary things about these three programs, number one, I don't think this is a Parks and Rec budgetary topic. I think this is a, a, a village expense and hopefully we can also as a township to donate some money towards this. But I don't think, I think that Ron is, is doing a great job with Parks and Rec. I think this is, you have to step outside of this. Back to what I was saying, what I've learned about WesRA and C-Spar, those are two are both, both very comparable, but the most important thing that I as a parent would, would think about most is that, you know, when my kids go to, I have a five-year-old, a three-year-old and a baby on the way. So my kids go to soccer or playdates, you know, they're able to go there all the time and forge these relationships. I think that when you look at the communities that are in WesRA and C-Spar, I think location is a huge factor. What's, what's as important is, I look at those two and I look at Brookfield, North Riverside and I see those are the, the, the villages that share the schools with Riverside. And I think with regard to forming friendships, you know, those, those, those organizations will help our kids and our adults actually, that, that, that has special needs, build friendships in those communities and, and the schools that we share with them. So I, I think that's really neat. I learned about LADZI from Lauren and I had never even heard of it. And, and what, what we talked about when we talked on the phone was the fact that the communities that LADZI is a part of are part of C-Spar. You might also have something with WesRA. There's, there's benefits to WesRA because Berwyn's close. There's, there's benefits to WESRA because Berwyn's closer, uh, Cicero's closer. But again, I go back to the primary thing. Building friendships in these programs is what I think is most important for us as a community to try and deliver to these families and other families that are here tonight. And I think that we really have to narrow it down to the two. Don't even look at the numbers at the top. We can, you know, we can, hopefully we can figure that out as a community, um, how to come up with an extra $30,000 or $6,000. I think that looking at it, at North Riverside's part of WESRA, Brookfield's part of C-Spar, we want these kids to have an opportunity to build friendships so that they have things to do with other kids and they can go places with people that, and have fun. And I mean, going and watching your kid have fun is one of the most rewarding things I've ever done in my life. And if we as a board can give these families an opportunity to do that and build these friendships, I, I just would really like to figure out a way. Most of the people that I've spoken to, yeah, I think that they're neutral on WESRA or C-Spar. I think there's pros and cons to both. But I've also, the, 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 the feedback I've gotten is that Gateway, it's just, it's just not where our community wants to be. So hopefully we can work with them to try and direct them to what they prefer. And please speak about that tonight too, because I think hearing, the board hearing why WESRA and C-Spar are better than Gateway in your eyes, um, would be powerful for everyone here. Sorry.
All right. Well, and with that, um, my name is Katie Gregory. I'm here with my husband Dave in the front row. We're at 180 South Cove, um, and we're here to talk, um, about the need for Riverside to join an SRA. Um, you know, the background is we have three children, two of whom have disabilities. While the, my one son who is hearing impaired, that has not really limited his ability to participate in Parks and Rec programming, my other son's developmental disability certainly has. Um, as you've been asking about experiences with Gateway, that is something that I can speak about, at least in my family situation. We enrolled, have, we've enrolled in both the swimming lessons and the horsemanship program. Both have been fabulous programs, have been very appreciative that Gateway has provided the opportunity for residents of communities that are not members to, to participate in those, cause that's not the case for most other SRAs. Now, while I really, really, really did appreciate that opportunity, you know, the swim lessons, I'm sitting there at the Y M C in Elmhurst and I'm hearing all these moms from Elmhurst talking about what class their kid is in, or what they're doing on the weekend, or another community event. And that is something where I sat alone, watched, banged on the window and make sure the instructor got my son back in the water, you know, doing all of those things. And, and I, I just felt that isolation, even in being in a room of parents of children with special needs, I felt very alone. You know, where were my Riverside friends? Where are my son's friends who attend Ames and live in North Riverside? You know, where are these, where are these kids getting services? And the reality is, most of them aren't, um, which is really unfortunate. So really, it's been wonderful to have something. I mean, really, you look at these lists of options and they're so limited. You know, Lauren spoke about calling about swim lessons. When your child has a disability, it's not as easy as saying, well, why don't we just sign you up for this different baseball league? Or let's try this other art thing. You know, kids with, that are typically developing have a wide vari- variety of interests. Kids with special needs are just, are exactly the same. You know, one program may not meet the needs of all of those children. And Gateway does a good job of trying to, to provide us some access to it, but I do not believe it is an end-all, be-all. Even if the, um, the village were willing to pay the difference between that non-resident and resident or member of non-member, really that isolation feeling would not go away. They have some really fabulous, um, social, social clubs and special events that are run through Gateway. A lot of them are done at the Hanson Center in Burr Ridge. Um, but the reality is, again, okay, every Saturday, would my son go to, um, you know, weekly activity, um, with kids like him? Maybe. But again, it's going to be with kids who are not going to end up going to RB. It's going to be with the kids that go to Hinsdale Central or to LT or something like that. Um, you know, I want, I want all of my kids to feel a place of belonging in Riverside. You know, we, we have friends in North Riverside that attend Ames with us, you know? We have friends in Brookfield that we'll go to RB with. Um, but you know, if my son were to decide to do Special Olympics, you know, if he did that through RB, that would be wonderful. But once he aged out of those services, because kids with disabilities become adults with disabilities, what are his options? If, if you live in Riverside, perhaps he could join a Special Olympics team through Gateway. But then he would be with those kids who, who went to Hinsdale Central and Hinsdale South. The friendships he had forged, unless you were able to get all of those parents, you know, to, to join those same things, it's really limited. Um, and right now, my children are very young. I have a seven-year-old, a five-year-old, and a two-year-old. But the reality is, children with disabilities grow into adults with disabilities and then become senior citizens with disabilities. Gateway and the other SRAs do provide social clubs and special events that will provide, you know, those recreational and social emotional needs for residents of all ages. I think a lot of, you know, the people we've heard speaking so far are similar to me in that, you know, we, our experience as special needs parents are, you know, up until, oh, age 11 or 12. What comes next? I don't know. But I'm, I'm very concerned and I believe my family makes Riverside better and I want to live here for the rest of my life. But the reality is, I'm going to have a son who will likely live with me until, through at least part of his adulthood. And I can't do that if it's a community that, that really can't embrace him and support his needs.
My name is Rosio Perez. I'm your neighbor. I live in Berwyn. And so my son, Tony Perez, who is now 26 years old, has been with, uh, participating in programs since he was five years old. I've been really blessed and WSSRA is one of the reasons why I have remained in Berwyn. So as you can see in this photo, Tony participated in Special Olympics, I'm happy to say, in June of 2017, he won a gold medal in swimming. Um, a lot of the parents here talked about friendships. So this is a picture of other friends that Tony has made throughout the years and the programs that he's been with WSSRA. I learned about WSSRA through the school and I felt blessed ever since. Uh, we started with summer day camp. Um, and summer day camp was a six-hour day as opposed to a one and a half summer school program. So as you know, I'm a working parent, so of course, if someone's going to watch my child for six hours as opposed to one and a half hours, I'm going to pick the summer day camp program. Plus there's swimming every day. Plus WSSRA offers transportation. It's a no-brainer. Uh, my son has participated in overnight camps. Um, he's participated in after-school programs. WSSRA has programs on holidays and on days that school is off, so like Presidents' Day. They are also innovative, so they don't just stay with the same program. With input from families such as the ones here, they have introduced new programs such as autism therapy movement, yoga, soccer, community cruisers. As they also, um, as people are aging, they have programs throughout the lifespan, so healthy living and eating and socializing. We talked, a lot of the parents talked here about the friendships and that is so important. But our children, our young adults, our older adults with disabilities are also learning socialization school, skills. They are also learning to follow the rules. Um, they're also learning sportsmanship. So there are a variety of benefits that, um, our individuals that we love so dearly are learning as they are participating in special recreation programming. I'm fortunate that I do belong to an SRA. I, I, it's very accessible. I like the variety of programming. I like the variety of locations where the programs are located. So yes, sometimes I do take advantage of the transportation. Another time, I am able to drive seven minutes away to Oak Park and do, go see, and see my son play softball. Uh, they are accessible. I can, I can register, um, online, I can register over the phone, I can mail it, I can fax it. Um, and I don't pay an extra fee because we are part of the membership. They have quality staff and I mean, all the way, from the drivers all the way to the superintendent, Marian Burko, who is here today. So when my son gets on their bus, I have no fears. I know that Tony is going to be taken care of and Tony knows all the drivers' names, Lou, Frank, Larry, and Mike. And I know that they will call me and let me know if Tony has a problem or if they're running late. Um, I just, I, it's, you, when you're raising your, your children, you have, you, you, there's that trust factor. And you trust your teachers, you know, you trust your family, but you're giving your family member over to another organization. And I totally trust WSSRA because I know the quality of the programming, I know they train their staff very well. Um, they also collaborate. So they're collaborating with other organizations such as Wonder Works Museum in Oak Park. They also collaborate with community support services. So it's not just park districts, but they also will innovate with collaborating with other organizations. As a parent, you're looking for resources and special recreation was the very first resource that I was able to get for my son. I waited five years to get respite services. I waited, you know, another five years to get, uh, state services. I was fortunate, um, for those of you who have older children, to get home-based services, home-based funding. But special recreation was with, for my son since the age of five and I am forever grateful for that. Um, they also have, like I said, um, they have scholarships. So if there are families in need, there are scholarships that are available. And yes, sometimes I did have to ask for a scholarship myself. Um, the other thing too, and I've looked at other SRAs, um, very few offer programs for young individuals. So they have the LECO Tech program, which is a toy lending library that starts at the age of birth. So that's a zero to six. How many agencies do you know start that young? That very many. There's only like three. And I looked up because I work for another agency that serves the city Chicago and the Northwest suburbs and they only have one organization that does LECO Tech. So, um, I want to thank for the opportunity to speak here for you tonight. Um, special recreation, as you can tell, is very near to dear to me, um, and to my family. So I hope you will take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Victoria De Leon. I'm, I live at 57 Long Common Road and I have a grandson who is a special needs child. He's going to Hollywood School right now and, um, he's, uh, doing very well. Uh, for the last few years, um, I've been very active. Uh, he's, my daughter lives right next door, so you can't get more active than that as a grandparent. But I've never been able to find a lot of activities for him. He's very able to do a lot of things, but there are, haven't been any programs that I've been able to find for him. Um, he would love to play basketball or soccer, a number of anything, um, especially swimming. He loves it. But again, as all the other parents have mentioned, it's really hard to do. Um, it's hard to find those kind of services. It happens to be that my neighbor is the daughter of State Representative Elizabeth Hernandez, who I believe President Sells so, sent you an email. Is that right?
Yes.
So I just wanted to let the people here know that I did reach out to her. She, um, is very supportive of, um, special needs, uh, uh, children to have the services that, that they need for, uh, to be, you know, well-rounded individuals and kids that are just like any other kid here in Riverside and, and be able to do the same things. And if you'll just allow me, um, I, I, I know she, I, I would, they sent me, uh, the, uh, Mike Erickson, who's the Chief of Staff for, uh, Representative Hernandez, sent me the letter she sent you?
Yes.
May I read it?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. It was to you, so.
Sure.
But first of all, she, they, uh, Mike Erickson said this, he said, President Sells, "The following is a letter of support from Representative Hernandez urging Riverside to join the WSSRA. Representative Hernandez would also like noted, uh, would also like noted the following. Constituents have reached out to our office asking for Riverside to join WSSRA. And two, Representative Hernandez does sit on the Human Services Appropriations Committee. If finances for Riverside are an issue in pursuing this, we can work together to find a solution." So I wanted to give, uh, you know, I know we talked about money, I've heard people talking about funding, so she's willing to help in any way she can. I, uh, so with that, I'll just read the letter. Honorable President Sells, I write to you today in support of the Village of Riverside joining the West Suburban Special Recreation Association. The WSSRA's mission is to provide quality recreation services for persons of all ages with disabilities, with a focus on their opportunity to have a fun, meaningful, and engaging recreational experience. The WSSRA partners with several surrounding communities, including but not limited to Berwyn, Cicero, North Riverside, Forest Park, and Oak Park. Throughout my career, I've been dedicated to ensuring all people have equal access to the opportunities our humanity bestows upon us. The WSSRA's mission dovetails with my personal and political philosophy perfectly. Families who have a special needs individual deserve access to opportunities like the kind WSSRA offers, close to their home. Families should not be burdened with the extra hassle of extended travel to provide their loved ones with fulfilling activity. The role of government in our lives is to lift up those most in need and create a society where everyone is free to pursue their goals and dreams. Riverside's potential partnership with WSSRA does just that. As the WSSRA can attest, the surrounding communities who have partnered with them have benefited greatly and eased the already great burden on families with special needs and individuals. The constituents who have reached out to my office have expressed a great desire for Riverside to be an inclusive and welcoming community for all. I respectfully urge you and the rest of the village board to partner with WSSRA and, and I invite you to work with me on finding a solution that is agreeable and helpful to all parties involved. Sincerely, Elizabeth Lisa Hernandez." I just wanted everybody to know that she is willing to help. I am not working on her campaign. But I thought it would be important to reach out to her and, um, try to get as many people on board. This is important. As all of you said or agreed, everybody wants to see it happen. Let's work on it. I'm sure everybody's here is willing to help in one way or another. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, uh, just to follow up on that, after I received that, that, uh, letter today, I contacted Mr. Erickson and asked him, um, if he could ask Lisa, why WSSRA? Um, and I asked, I'd, I'd like to hear from her why she chose that one over, say, C-Spar or Gateway, when we had, like I said earlier, we have countervailing requests from our, our residents. Um, I, I checked while you were talking, she hasn't gotten back to me yet, but I, but I know she will. Cause she, because she always does. Yeah. So thank you for that. Did I see the other hand? Yes, please.
I think to add to that too, um, we keep, we do want to hear why, why, why WESRA? Um, I, I kind of disagree with President Sells a little bit and then I think we should find out what's best and then go figure out how to fund it, um, not cut corners. So I think I've got my main, my mind made up. Um, I think others are probably formulating that, but please tell us why this organization? I think that's the most helpful thing I'll do right now.
Probably not going to be able to answer that. Uh, Dahlia Leotnikas, 265 Northwood. Um, I am not a parent of a special needs child. I'm Riverside resident. I'm glad to hear that you don't have to be convinced, uh, to provide these services, but just in case, just add my two cents. Um, so the fact that this issue is being brought up is, um, is wonderful, but it's also, it's also makes me a little sad that it has to be brought up like this. I know it, it does, but it, it still makes me sad. Um, we in towns like ours do so much for our kids. We jump through all kinds of hoops and buy them everything and give them all the extracurricular things they could possibly want and that they don't even want. Um, let's make sure that we are talking about all of our kids. Let's do the right thing. Let's do the only right thing. Let's join an SRA. And you did, you also said that you don't know how we can make this happen or what the right way to make this happen is, should we do this? Should we do that? Let's have these discussions. Um, I get it, yes, that's an important discussion to have. Let's just, I just hope we don't get caught up in, uh, too long of a discussion about this, um, discussing whether or not, you know, it's a stupor porch.
Or, or a stupid porch.
Or a stupid porch. Let's just, let's just make it happen.
Hi, I'm Therese Dolzall at 198 West Quincy. Dolzalls have been in Riverside for 50 years, so I haven't been there in that long, but I feel this is very important to me. My daughter Katie is six and a half and she's autistic and I'm not here to tell you why we need these things because I think you guys have all agreed that that's the point. What I want to make clear is that opening up the catalog of all the other services that are available and just reimbursing is a cop-out, in my mind. I think it's saying, well, here, here, you know, you can go elsewhere and you can find these things, but that puts more of a burden on us as the parent to go do the research, make the phone calls, wait two years to see if we can get in. And I just, I think that puts undue burden on us as residents who pay our taxes, who are part of this community. And it is very isolating. So I'm from Florida, I didn't know a lot of people. My husband knows everyone in Riverside, and so Jesus probably knows. And so for me, it's hard to find other moms, especially as a working mom, who have children with special needs. So I can't speak to whether, you know, this is the best organization, but I think we need to pick a organization to be a member of so that we can bring these services to our home community.
Mr. Malkyody, can I ask you a question, a follow-up question on that? So, so to that point, if we were, if we opened up the Gateway catalog, how would a resident access those programs and how would the reimbursement program work?
They would, they would have to register for the programs, but that's indicative of any of the SRAs. The reimbursement would work on the backend, they would just need to provide their receipt. The other thing that we could help with, I have had some feedback in regard to Gateway that they weren't getting back to people in a timely fashion. If that was the route that the village decided to go, I would certainly pledge my help to liaison that relationship and expedite any contact or any registration.
Can I ask a question?
Of course, please.
So if you, if we're part of Gateway and we sign up for the programs and the reimbursement, we pay Gateway and then we're reimbursed by the village after?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just gonna, this is, that is a burden. Right.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you need to go up there.
I just want you to understand that that reimbursement process is a burden because if we were just part of an, an SRA, we would sign up just like I do at Parks and Rec now for any program. I pay my money and I go to the program. That extra step, I know it sounds so small, but the amount of time that I spend on the phone with insurance companies, going through EOBs, I mean, it's, I can't even explain to you how exhausting being a parent of a special needs child is. And that little thing would be just one more hoop to jump through that honestly, I might say, you know what, I don't have it in me to do this. Because then I have to go back to Parks and Rec, make sure I get the receipt right. It's one more box to check that I just want to say that's why I would say no.
Ron, Ron, let's, let's take that, for, for example, is there an opportunity to talk to Gateway and have them bill us directly for the difference and take that reimbursement out?
It's something we can explore. We, right now, like I said, the information that we provided was not to steer the discussion toward one SRA over another, just to kind of provide baseline information on all of them for the purpose of discussion. I think that the broader discussion is, should we join an SRA or not? Any of those individual situations could be explored. I, I would have no problem at all contacting Gateway and seeing if something can be done on the front end. I mean, I, we could certainly explore it. Whether or not they, you know, they would do that, I don't know, but I think that's something that, regardless of this, the SRA we choose, I, the department would still act as a liaison.
Ma'am, did you want, did you want to speak? Yes, please.
So my name is Anna Shay. I live at 311 Selborn and we've been in Riverside for about 18 years. We have two boys, a 14-year-old and an 11-year-old. The 11-year-old is on the spectrum. High-functioning, very outgoing, but has had difficulty in terms of participating in any sort of activities. So just from our own personal experience, when Josh was about four or five, we put him into soccer and he basically stood in the middle of the field yelling, not understanding, having to be redirected, trying to understand. Our oldest son had the ability to participate in different activities and he played basketball. We took Josh to a game. Josh had problems with the buzzer. We had to get him out of the gym because it was too loud. And so he's never really been able to participate in a, in an active sport. We have, like many other parents that you've heard here today, have found other avenues and we have found other activities for Josh. I am officially still on the waiting list to the Hanson Farms for the horseback riding, have still not gotten a call. If you go onto the Gateway site, I have tried Gateway a couple of times. If you go on, it's very difficult to navigate. I mean, it's a flat document, you can't sign online, you have to call them. I just tried again in January, they haven't returned my call. So it's not an easy process or a rec, a, whatever, resource to go through. And so I think that is, it makes it even more difficult than just trying to get them to participate in these activities. I'm looking personally, I would like WSSRA just because I know my oldest son participated in activities in North Riverside. They have a great gym, you know, hopefully, I, I'm not looking for, for Josh to be, you know, a pro athlete, I just want him to be able to participate maybe once a week in a basketball game or something that would be able to accommodate him and be able to have him run around and be with kids that are within the community, that he knows that he's been in school with, that he's able to just share an hour or two. Because like many others have said in, in this room, many of these kids are isolated, it's difficult for them to make friends. They have that time in school, but once they get out of school, they really don't have any other opportunities. So I would appreciate it if we would just participate in, in one of these so that we can provide avenues to these kids and, and a resource. Thank you.
So, so, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
So, so, so back to this, the difference between these three programs and again, what I've learned over the past two or three weeks. I'm looking at these communities that are under WSSRA, CSpar, and Gateway, and if you look at those, I'm not the sharpest type in the drawer, but you can see, you can see the clusters of communities that are, that are, that are grouping themselves together based on schools. And I go back to what I said earlier and what I've tried to learn from many of you is that building these relationships and these friendships with others that gives these children confidence is what's most important here. And if your kid, if you're walking your kid to school and your kid has special needs or your kid's not typical, then you're walking there and if that kid on the way to school starts to get nervous or discouraged, I, I think that being able to see someone from these programs as they walk up to school would be empowering not just for the kids, but also for the parents. I think that's what we need to focus on. They all offer great programs, they're, I'm sure they're all great, but there's these clusters in here. And I think the clusters are what we should look at as a community, specifically in North Riverside and Brookfield because that's where we're sharing those schools. And I agree with Trustee Setteby, at a certain point, I know this is representative from WSSRA here, it'd be great if, if eventually you got a bit spoken, talked a little bit about, I hate to say I'm a sales guy, right, but the differentiators between yourself and the other program so we can hear that as a, as a board. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
My name's Domenico Jimenez, I live at 569 West Parkway Road. I've been living on Riverside for about three years, four years. I moved here, one of the reasons, or among other reasons, right, but was I didn't want my kids to go to a private school. I wanted to go to a public school because I wanted my kids to go to a birthday party two blocks away, three blocks away, right? If you go to a private school, you're kind of driving a little bit more, you plan a play date, you gotta think about how long it's gonna take you to get there, how long the play date's gonna take, whereas now my kids are able to just go to a neighbor's house or block down and I'm like, all right, you better be back in an hour, I don't have to worry about it. And I feel like a lot of our kids that need the special needs, they don't have that at home. Riverside is our home and they don't have that. And we, one of the moms who were staying here when they were in Elmhurst, they felt out of place. That's a horrible feeling. And even my son doesn't need like the special needs or, you know, the assistance, he had anxiety and just to get him to go to any regular class, it was like, well, so-and-so's gonna be there, your friend's gonna be there and not having that for your child to say, well, you know this person, just to motivate him to get there, having to go so far, but you're also leaving your other kids to go to another community and you're kind of jeopardizing that too because you're leaving them back, you have to go over here. And I know I'm having so many thoughts and I'm probably not making sense, but I have a choice, my kids have a choice to feel out of place when we go travel soccer to another community. My son decides to do that. I feel a mom like, oh, everybody knows each other at La Grange, I don't know them. But some of these moms don't have the choice. Like they feel out of place because these things are not, or these programs are not offered at home. So I, I kind of wish that that was offered for everybody in Riverside and we kind of could stay home and do these things with our kids and be able to know, hi, how are you and so-and-so's gonna be there instead of, oh, we have to go to Naperville, we have to go to La Grange and well, we're gonna see who we're gonna meet there versus parents that you already know or kids that you already know within the community. And I have a brother with Noonan Syndrome, he's 21 years old, he lives in Berwyn and he met a lot of friends through there. And currently, like, I'm surprised with the social life that he has, but I was like, where's he going? Because I was like, well, with his friend Ricky, I'm like, where? It's like, well, they're gonna go to movies or taking the bus. I'm like, really? But you know, they met through WSSRA, they gave him the opportunity to have the social events they would gather. And I learned this with him, I mean, he's way younger than I am, but I was really surprised, like, yeah, they get together and then they go on the bus and there's an adult and another adult, but now they have become friends and they've been friends for so many years and they don't feel uncomfortable with each other because they both have needs, different needs. But they live within two blocks, within three blocks, they don't have to go away to go to a friend. Does this make sense? I don't know. That's just something nice to have at home. I don't know. And I hope that this is offered to every child that lives in Riverside or have that opportunity. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Veselsky, this is Stevie. As you can see by our shirts, we're matching today, it's International Angelman Day. But if you read my shirt, it says I, it says I am his voice. As anybody else in here who has a child without special needs, they are their voice for a long time before they could speak. He can never speak. Most children with special needs have difficulty communicating, so it's our job to speak for them. I appreciate that you are offering to reimburse us to send to Gateway, but Wendell, you've said words, everything I was thinking. We want to be able to be with family and community is family, and Riverside feels like family. We have streets and we walk down the streets and, you know, through the holiday stroll and see everybody and hugs and kisses and, I mean, Riverside is family. We want to be with other kids that are, we see all the time. And it's important for him, it's important for her, it's important for Fiona, it's important for Cameron. The bottom line is it's just important to be with other parents that are close to us, not in Burr Ridge, not out of Hinsdale. You know, and we, we have the support of the whole town. I mean, there's a lot of people, you know, there's, the majority is with us and will support in any way that we need to do. If we have to fundraise, we'll fundraise. If we have to, you know, we shouldn't have to, but we're willing to do, you know, anything that's necessary. And it's, you know, that's it. I was trying to be short and sweet. Done.
If I may, could I speak specifically to the question that you asked about, like, which one, like, what differentiates them? For you, I, there's a bunch of things, but I wrote down three things that are important on here. The first is transportation, okay? And transportation is oftentimes a major barrier to access of programs. Tony Perez gets picked up at his door and taken to programs in WSSRA, right? Gateway, which you guys are asking about, what if you open up the book to Gateway? Gateway does kind of a node transportation kind of thing. So if we can get our child to one of their nodes, which happened to be in either Burr Ridge or Elmhurst or I believe Hinsdale or something, or Brook, if we can drive our child to that point, then we can get transportation from there, all right? But there is no transportation from Riverside to the Gateway programs. As far as I know, it doesn't exist. It's a major barrier for Gateway and it's a major barrier that I think you guys really need to consider very seriously. The second has been brought up is our neighbors are in either WSSRA or CSpar, right? And they're the neighbors that are, have kids that are going to be in schools that our kids are going to be in. I think that's a third major differentiator. And the third is the proximity, proximity of the programs themselves. So Gateway offers programs. Where are those programs? They're almost all either in Elmhurst or Burr Ridge, right? They're not here anywhere near our communities. And so you build into what are already very busy schedules, full of therapy programs and all sorts of different stuff going on, and you're adding a whole ton of transportation time to that program here. Whereas we hear about program, people who are in other special rec associations have programs that are much closer. WSSRA runs programs in nearby communities and you hear Tony Perez going seven minutes to a program in Oak Park or other things that are nearby, they're accessible for us. And I truly think, I, I truly don't know a great deal about Gateway as an organization, but transportation that doesn't reach into our community and programs in Elmhurst and Burr Ridge don't work for us. And I just want you guys to hear that.
I'm Mary Ann Burko, I'm the Executive Director with WSSRA and I've been there for 35 years. So I've been around the block a little while. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I applaud all of you, all of you for being here and having this conversation. Anyone asks what partnering with WSSRA is? It's about community, it's about serving and it's meeting needs. Who is WSSRA? We provide recreation opportunities for children through adults with disabilities, all ages, all abilities, for folks who live in our 12 communities. WSSRA is one of the SRAs that has limited their services to those who live in our communities because we're a tax-based agency and we believe our taxes need to go towards those who pay for it. The other aspect of that is that we're surrounded by communities who are not part of an SRA. What's the incentive to join if all you have to do is pay a non-resident fee? And that fee would never call, cover the expenses of the services that we would be providing. So that has been our board's directive and I followed that and it's very important to who we are as an agency. So what does WSSRA provide? It's everything that everyone spoke about tonight. It's heartwarming to hear it and heartbreaking to know that people aren't getting it. We provide friendship, we provide oper, unity for socialization, we provide opportunities for skill-building and so much more. You're making comparisons to three different agencies. Every one of them has the ability to provide you those services. Some, and each one of us do it in a different way. And the reason it's different is because we're meeting needs of those folks in our communities. Some of the, Ron, I applaud you for the homework you've done. There are a few things that I wanted to point out and some of them have been addressed that are a little bit different than what is in the chart. First of all, probably the number one question you ask is, if we're the same, why is the price so much higher? WSSRA is higher in comparison primarily to, due to the fact that the EAVs of the communities that we serve are different. Our formula for our partner shares is based on EAV. And in West Suburban, it's based on 75% EAV and 25% population. And that's gross population, it's not based on individuals with, with special needs in that community. So CSpar's EAV is $4 billion higher than West Suburban. So their dollars, that their shares are, are going to spread out further. So their dollars, that their shares are, are going to spread out further. Therefore lessening the cost to each of the partners. In C-Spar's program, you would be considered from the calculations that I looked at, the second lowest in providing shares for that particular agency. So in other words, there are communities that are much, much larger and have a much higher EAV. In West Suburban, you would be considered middle of the road. You're not the highest, you're not the lowest, you're right in the middle. So because we don't have as high an EAV, the cost of doing the services costs more. That's the reality. I wish it were different.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What difference does that make? What difference does it make whether we're in the middle of the road or we're the second or the lowest in terms of the services we receive?
It doesn't change the services you receive. So everyone gets equal buy-in to the services. The brochure that we offer, everyone can participate in anything that we provide as long as you meet the basic requirements of that particular program. And that would be true of any SRA. I don't know of any SRA that limits a program for a particular group within their cooperative.
You, and I don't know if I'm catching this right. Yes, C-Spar has more EAV because they have more communities.
Yes.
Is
No, not more communities, just a higher EAVs within those communities.
As Westra, if they get, say Riverside and North Riverside comes online, you're picking up EAVs.
Correct.
Does those extra dollars then just get disputed, distributed? And then the price eventually would
If we would take on more communities, you see some adjustment, but it's not huge. Because you still have a bottom line dollar amount that you're trying to meet to provide the services.
You've got more users then too.
Correct. And more expenses. But very good question. So the other piece in this that you've heard about that wasn't clear or is not correct on the chart is that WSSRA does provide door-to-door transportation. We're very different than anyone else. It's something that was started years ago and we stayed in the business. It's expensive, but it is what our participants and our families have asked for. We are one of the only SRAs that provides door-to-door transportation. I don't believe any of the others that you're comparing us to does. 60% of our programs provide door-to-door transportation. Now, a consumer can choose to use it or not. There is additional fee for that. But speaking of fees, I think that's an important piece, Ron, that you'll want to take a look at is making fee comparisons. Because the consumer, that's the part where they have to pay in. As any of us, if we signed up for a recreation program within any recreation department, you're paying a fee. The fee comparison that I did, and again, it was a very, a snapshot of each of the agencies. WSSRA was half to a third lower than any of the others. And part of that is not because it costs us less. It's because you only, you set your fees based on what the consumer can bear. And we serve a broad spectrum of communities socio-economically. And we have to, we have to make those adjustments in the fees that we set for our programs. So you would be paying more fees, much higher fees for some of the other agencies. And I encourage you to take a look at that. With that information, go back to your consumers and find out what their needs truly are. Being a part of a community and close to home, securing friendships close to home are obviously the things that have been shared tonight. Frederick Homestead designed this beautiful village of Riverside to be an all-inclusive community. Having everything accessible and within arm's reach. If each, if he were here today, he would support your efforts to make it accessible to all persons, including persons with disabilities. And encourage you to make the right decision that meets the best interests of your consumers. And I am not here to say, WSSRA is that agency. We would love to be that, have that opportunity. It is really what is in the best interest of your community and meeting your consumers' needs. Thank you. Happy to answer any other questions?
And thank you for coming tonight. This is very useful to hear these kind of comparisons. Did you say that there was an extra fee for transportation?
Yes. There's a fee for programs and there's a fee for transportation. And the fee for transportation, I believe it's $6.20 per round trip.
And you have the longest commitment requirement? You require a five-year commitment?
Correct.
Why is that?
Because I think it takes that long for you to understand who we are as an agency and your consumers to be able to connect with us.
How is that different than the other agencies that don't require five years?
It's just what our board has required. I think based on the chart, you understand that we developed, as of last year, changed our articles to allow new communities to be considered for gradual buy-in. And that allows the first and second year, the first year it would be at 50% of the rate that you would normally be charged. The second year, 75% and then the third year, 100%. Believing that you're not going to get everyone in onboard in that first year. It's going to take time.
Just from, I know it's a nonprofit, but I think also from a financial perspective, having that predictable revenue coming in allows them to invest in programs, transportation. If I was on the board of that, I'd want a commitment too.
Well, it's anything onboarding any agency. Absolutely.
I think that's something that's actually a differentiator. So the three things that you specifically said, just so the board understands is the fees are less for the individual families, which they're burdened by additional fees as is through therapy, travel, et cetera. Location of the programs are clearly in a cluster around Riverside. And then transportation, so $6, yes, six bucks for a round trip to go to 60% of the different programs.
I'm sorry, say that last one.
$6 for round trip transportation.
Yes.
Which, I mean, to my fellow trustees, you know, which to me is an incredible value. Because what we have to remember is that the families in this room are much more overly burdened than I am with typical children. And I just think that that's something that we need to take into consideration. It's not like they're looking for a free ride to get to horseback riding. They need, they need help getting there because they've got other things they have to do.
I think another important point that was, question that was asked was related to distance to, for travel. The average travel time or distance from Riverside to a WSSRA program is 2 to 3.5 miles. That's the average. Because more of our programs are centrally located because you've got folks coming from the north and from the south. And from a transportation point of view, you're always thinking in terms of logic and what makes the most sense. And then your average distance for C-Spar is 15 to 19 miles. And that's where their programs, and this is a comparison of about 22 programs. So certainly not across the board. But the choice of where programs are is not just the availability of facilities. It's really where you're going to get the majority of folks and the ease of getting them to that location.
But wouldn't that be dependent upon where you live?
No. Anyone here can participate in any program?
No, no, you're, when you're saying the average distance to a program, doesn't that depend on where you live?
Well, I'm just saying from Riverside.
So that is from Riverside?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do appreciate you taking the time out to come tonight. That was, that was a bummer to be out.
Happy to be here.
I could see why everyone looks to your organization because it
They're all great organizations. There's no question.
But it's thanks to the leadership, so I appreciate you coming.
No problem. Happy to be here. Thank you.
I think it's time now for us to talk. We've had a lot of really good inputs, so what are your thoughts? Any questions, other research? Where are we?
I would love to be able to figure a way to work with the taxing resources, the bodies, the township, Ms. Hernandez, the village, to try to be able to put this together. I mean, we are, we are, we are a revenue-strapped community. So we have to think of a lot of different things. But I think we have some, I think we have some opportunities that we need to explore. And we should, we should do that. I know some of you have talked to the township. Has anybody actually gone to any township meetings? Is there any feedback from?
My name's Tim Hylenbach. I'm a Riverside Township trustee and also president of the Riverside Township Mental Health Board. We are currently working with North Riverside. We're going through some of the logistics with their program. One taxing body can't give money to another taxing body. That's part of the problem we had when North Riverside approached us to go through this. This is the responsibility of not the township, but the village. And it's a difficult one, I understand, but it's one that's desperately needed. That being said, as a township, the mental health board is willing to help in some ways. There are logistical problems that we're working through right now. But we would absolutely love to team up with the town of Riverside if they go forward with this program. That's what I can tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have an opinion, it's not if, it's when and how. How we can do it as soon as we can and how we facilitate it. At least that's kind of where I'm at. And I gained a ton of information today. And I certainly thank folks for sharing. And I know it can be difficult to share, so I appreciate that. I think it's helpful for everybody, even all the taxpayers to hear that and the struggles that are there. And we need to be reminded of that from time to time. So thank you all for coming.
Mr. Paul?
I came in here thinking, several thoughts. One was that maybe we should give Gateway more promotion, a better chance. But the geography part of that equation really bugs me. And I get it. I mean, it's, you know, you want to be, regardless of the deeds of your child, you want him to be close and you want him to be doing stuff with kids that go to school with, preferably, that type of thing. As, yeah, I'm in favor of pursuing this and do some more research. As far as which organization, which organization to join, I think we need to hear from the park board. The park board, from what I gather, said, sounds great, but we don't have the money for it. I think if this board tells the park board, we'll find the money. Then they'll, they can, they're the ones best suited to decide which organization is best suited for Riverside. Well, they should be.
Parents. No, the parents.
Well, obviously, they would seek input from the parents. But as far as a village, village function, as far as the village, the village, the park board is the one that has the mandate and the knowledge. You know, there's a lot of research that needs to be done to decide which organization. And I would think that's the park board's jurisdiction and expertise. If I heard right from what was written and what Ron said tonight, they just said no because they didn't have the money. Well, I'm saying again, let's tell them that we'll find the money. You tell us, you make a recommendation to us on which organization to join. And in the meantime, staff needs to figure out how we can pay for this.
I just have one additional point. I'm 100% in favor with what, particularly what you, trustee Dees, have mentioned about the location being so critical. And I'm 100% in favor of moving forward with one of these. I want to just make the note that this also goes along with the branding initiative that this community is undertaking. To me, we are consistently, I mean, every year, we're bringing in more and more families, young, families with young kids. And this is, to me, a critical piece that we are missing in that messaging, that this is an inviting in an open community. So I agree, if not when, or, I think I got that right. When, not if. But I believe that, in my mind, it's down to the WSSRA and the C-Spar, if I'm saying that correctly. Because location is just, it's a non-starter for me. If you can't get kids to where they are engaging with other kids that they're going to see again, then they're not going to develop the relationships. And it could actually be more detrimental, in my mind, so.
I think I'd agree with that. I'd rather spend 77 grand on something that people use than 38 grand on somebody that they don't use.
Exactly.
So with that in mind, do we want to ask the Parks and Recreation Board to do, or the department to do a more in-depth comparison of WSSR and C-Spar? I could get in contact with Representative Hernandez and talk to her about potential funding, help from the state.
I would like to make a motion that we direct the Parks and Recreation Board to look into this further with the understanding that the village will figure out the funding based on their recommendation.
Actually, I have one more question and you can just, like, because we were told with regard to C-Spar, we were told that with regard to C-Spar, that even if we were interested in joining the C-Spar SRA, that it would be at least a year before that could be fulfilled. Is that a similar timeline with WSSRA?
That's a tough question. We're just onboarding a brand-new district. Is it impossible to do a court fair? No, it's not impossible. It's a matter of the steps that need to be followed. It did take from February of last year to October to get everything in order for their official sign-up. And then we did it because it made sense on this year. It would be done more quickly. The next step would be a letter of intent to our board. And then I need to do my research to make a recommendation to our board. And then I send the response back to you and then everything.
So let me ask, let me ask the parents who are here. So we're looking at, we're looking at a year, if it was going to be WSSR or C-Spar. What about if in the interim, we were to open up the Gateway catalog, the programming to you on a reimbursement level? That way, we would at least have immediate programming available while we're going through this process. Is that something that you would use if we were to do that? I see people saying no.
Would you say, I don't know that that in and of itself is a bad thing? I would just say, don't fool yourselves and think you're really providing true access to programs by doing that. And I don't hear you saying that.
No, I'm not saying that.
But, but, but don't believe that you did something that's substantial enough by doing that. It's maybe better than not doing anything.
Which is what I intend.
Yeah.
I have a question for the executive director. So during that process, that approval process, have you ever, historically, or maybe we could be the first, have you ever allowed access to a community out of reimbursement, or some way to allow these kids and adults an opportunity to be a part of it during your decision-making process?
We have.
You have done that?
Yes.
Is this something you would consider this time around for us?
I think that we just need to get all of our desks.
Right. One more thing on the financials.
The next thing I want to do is start it and I'm looking in place. That is a very important. Is it possible to utilize it through North Riverside? It doesn't make any difference. So it's really important for everyone to understand.
Yeah, maybe you should come up.
All 12 of our partners, in terms of where programs exist, they can happen in all 12 communities, but it doesn't necessarily, again, we decide where programs go based on what makes sense, based on the needs that have been expressed. So I'm not going to tell you today that I'm going to offer 10 programs in Riverside. But if the need and the express need and it makes sense, we'll consider it. But there's a lot of factors that have to come into play. And I think that's an important thing. So when you say North Riverside, we do have two programs now in North Riverside physically, but the North Riverside residents can participate in all 70 programs that are offered. So is that clear?
Yes, also I have a question on that. So with regard to my question about during that approval period, these kids are young, these adults, I mean, they need it now, right? So during that period, when you allowed villages or townships access to it in the past during that due diligence process, were they, did they have access to all the, to the 70 programs? Or was it abbreviated?
It was a long time ago. It was when I first started at the agency and I believe they had full access.
Okay.
But I, that was a long time ago. And again, the reason that you wait is to make sure that everything's in order and that the rollout is a positive experience. The last thing I want is for it to not, everything to be in order. So, there's a lot of factors. Ideally, what I would love to be able to say to you tonight is, "Give me till summer. Allow you to register for day camp and let us get things rolling." But I can't even tell you that at this point. There's a lot of things that would need to be considered.
Disrupting, you can come back.
There is one more thing I want to share with you that could help in your decision, and just something to think about. Years ago, and actually, this was a program that I was talking about in terms of what we allowed them in beforehand. I'm probably not going to name the community because it's not a good idea. There was an agency that was considering, a community that was considering us, and they were also considering another special representation at the same time. We all did our presentations, and in the end, there was a political decision made to go with the other agency. And unfortunately, it was very similar in terms of the proximity. It was on the north end of our communities. And the consumers, to this day, I still hear from them on how unhappy they are because of the distance they have to travel to get services. And they give up. And I don't want you to find yourself in that place.
We don't make decisions like that here.
So, just as I've lived through it.
One more thing on the financial aspect, just so all the trustees are aware of this. If you take, if you do the math over the five-year period, it's actually only averages out to $65,000 a year, not $77,000 a year. So, that's, yeah, I mean, it's saving us a little bit.
Back to Doug's point, I don't want to kick this back down to the Recreation Board. I think we've heard enough from people here about door-to-door transportation. I think we've heard enough about proximity. I mean, I look at C-Spar, and quite frankly, Gateway's closer. And so, I think I've made my decision on where we should be at. Plus, I really do appreciate you taking the effort to come here.
Well, I came uninvited by some parents, but not, and so I.
But that, that to me shows, that, 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 to me, shows that, you know, you, you, again, everything starts from the top. And if you're here, obviously, your employees are equally as dedicated as you are. So, I'm not in favor of just kicking this back down to the Recreation Board. I'm in favor of, you know, let's take it to the next step. Let's see how we can fund it, and let's try to move, try to move forward and see if we get to something we can work on.
I agree with trustee Ballerin as well. And I'm reluctant to open up Gateway because I think it distracts from getting to where we want to be. I think it's a good idea, but I, we have limited resources in Parks and Rec. Happy to hear your thoughts on that, Ron. But I'd rather focus on getting this done right and as quickly as possible versus having multiple initiatives at the same time.
I'm in favor of that. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, we think President Salz, and we had a brief discussion about it, was, you know, and again, just to speak to the residents and the audience tonight, we had no way, prior to this meeting tonight, to even gauge the demand. So, this is representative, if we had this information going in, it's a much different discussion tonight and a much different presentation. So, we're only, we're operating with the limited information we have. So, I think the Gateway is, since that was something we were already doing, we knew it was going to be a process to join any SRA. So, do we offer this as like a stopgap? But if it's viewed as muddying water, that's, you know, that's the prerogative of the board as well. But I think that's why that was discussed.
I want to, since you're, I want to press on one thing, and this goes to this proximity question, because it's something I'm not, so, and let's just take the two that we're talking about. So, whether, if we join WSSR or we join C-Spar, we are going to allow either one of those organizations access to facilities that we have here in Riverside.
Because that's. That's part of the membership.
So, and Wendell, this goes to what you were talking about. You know, this notion that, that, you know, our kids are going to be with their friends, you know, because you're looking at Brookfield or North Riverside.
Sure.
That's only if they pick programs that are offered.
Right, but let's take the opposite. And those are kids that are going to.
But I'm just saying, the majority of programming is not going to be in one of those locations.
No, I understand that, but the kids from those communities are going to be at the programs.
If they're taking the same classes.
Correct.
Right.
It's a higher likelihood, but there's no.
There's a higher likelihood.
Yeah, it's a higher likelihood.
Right.
Again, this is feedback from the parents, not sort of community, for the group.
I mean, I personally think that, I mean, it's nice that we had a representative from WSSR here. I think it's only prudent to have a representative from C-Spar also at least have the same opportunity to make their case, so to speak, before we make a decision like this. That seems reasonable to me, especially when some of the communications we got from people specifically said they wanted, they were looking at C-Spar. So, it seems to me that we're pulling the trigger too fast without hearing from at least the other organizations, and maybe both organizations. I mean, I, it can't hurt to have this analysis done.
There's a motion on the table.
Well, there's a motion, I think, or a second.
Yeah, second.
So, what is your motion specifically?
My motion was to commit ourselves to joining an SRA. And then, in order to determine which SRA is best for the residents of Riverside, is to have the Parks and Recreation Board dig deep into it with our staff, and of course, have public meetings to get input from residents. I'm surprised, and that's my motion, I'm surprised that people feel like, you know, this is an obvious decision either way. I see pros and cons. I mean, in terms of sharing schools, you got Brookfield in one, you got North Riverside in the other, you know? So, the school sharing thing is, looks.
But are you saying then, why are you wiping out Gateway from your motion?
I'm not, I'm wiping out Gateway just because they're.
So, you're saying, let's look at the two that are.
Although, yeah, I mean, personally, I am, but my motion certainly doesn't wipe out anybody. My motion is just to have the Park Board dig deep into this. But it seems, on the surface at least, that C-Spar and WSSR, both geographically at least, seem pretty equal to me. You know, you've got LaGrange, Western Springs, and Brookfield in the one. And then you've got, you know, you go west in the one, and the other, you go north with North Riverside, Forest Park, Berwyn, and Oak Park in River Forest that are fairly close by. So, you know, which one's better? It's probably going to depend on pricing of their programs, the wide variety of programs they provide. The transportation factor is a key factor to be considered. You know, does that benefit, you know, does that push us toward WSSR because they have that? I don't know. And I just don't feel prepared to decide between the two or three. And I want, you know, some more info on it.
If I could, just to speak to trustee Pollak's motion, while I'm perfectly happy to discuss it with the Parks and Recreation Board, I would like, I guess, a little more direction, either from trustee Pollak or the rest of the board, as to how to focus that discussion, or at least move the discussion away from a preference discussion. I agree with the consensus in the crowd that our biggest resource is going to be the parents. But I don't know how you move that discussion to something kind of clear-cut because transportation might mean more to one family, the cost might mean more to another family. I don't.
Yeah, my answer to that would be, we're not asking you to do the preferential analysis, we're asking for the facts. So, if you said, you could say, "Swimming lessons. Swimming lessons cost this much with this one, this much with this one. This one does not offer door-to-door transportation, this one does at this cost, and they are provided at these locations."
I guess essentially.
That, I think, is that the kind of thing?
I'm looking for a preferential recommendation. I mean, most like any other plan, any other committee we have. Planning and zoning makes recommendations on zoning.
But that's, that's the kind of decision we have to make.
Yeah, I know, absolutely. It's our decision. We just overturned our planning and zoning commission. If we don't like their recommendation.
But in terms of what we want from Parks and Rec, am I getting it right?
From the staff?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. And then present that information to Parks and Rec Board, have public meetings. And then, I mean, they make decisions, if I understand their role correctly, they make decisions on programming all the time, right? They decide which programs are best for our residents. The Parks and Rec Board does that, right, with staff's input. This is to be the same thing. They're making a recommendation to us on what program best suits our community.
Based on, we control all those factors, though.
Yeah.
These, like, so I guess essentially what I would be asking then is, what is the specific information that you want us to drill down on? If you, do you want us to focus on fees and transportation and do another comparison? Obviously, we're going to reach out to parents and see what their preference is and what their priorities are. But what would the board like us to present back? Because I don't, I don't want to waste the parents' time or the village board's time. So, if, I'm happy to provide more information. Like I said, this was not the, you know, all-inclusive of everything.
Well, I've given the answer to that question. What are your answers?
I have a question, Ron. With regard to WSSR and C-Spar, do you know already which programs are more affordable for the families? Is it WSSR?
I didn't. We looked at membership fees more than individual programs.
Do both programs offer front-door transportation?
No, and even on that factor, we looked at it like in totality. So, it was, as Mary Ann said, the 60% is why we listed that, because it wasn't across the board, door-to-door travel. They obviously offered more transportation than others. A lot of them are hubs and drop-off and pickup points. So, that's definitely a plus for WSSR, but.
So, because you mentioned that you were going to ask the parents, are any parents in the room right now, do any of you know, have any of you compared WSSR to C-Spar from a cost perspective for the programs? A, and B, do you know if C-Spar picks up door-to-door? You might need to come up here. That's the reason.
I just briefly looked at the swimming lessons. It's $180 at C-Spar and about $35 for WSSR.
What about transportation, sorry?
I think we owe it to Parks and Rec Department staff to narrow it down. I know that wasn't your motion, but I don't think I want them to go through the exercise for three organizations and compare them front to back.
I don't mind eliminating Gateway.
But I still don't support, I feel, these families have been to Parks and Rec, then they've been here, then we're going to send them back to Parks and Rec, and then we're going to bring them back here again.
I would be fine to have the staff report back to us.
That's what I.
I think, I think we need to take the fee compares, get a fee comparison, just like that was just now provided, so we can do a good checks and balance, because your upfront cost might be higher, but your overall cost might be the same. And then it comes down to getting the input. I think we definitely need to give an opportunity, once that information's known, for the residents that are going to participate in the program to help us make that decision. Is that something we should burden Parks and Rec with? Is that something that perhaps Karen Johns can help us with? I mean, that's a, no?
No, I think the department.
But can I make a suggestion with regard to the programs, looking at, like, the top 10 programs versus all of them in a more global sense, for those that are the most popular 10 for both C-Spar and WSSR, and compare those? Because for all intensive purposes, the likelihood that our residents are going to be registering for those classes is pretty high.
Not just, sorry, not just the cost, but also distance from Riverside, to me, would be something people are going to look at.
We're looking for a return on the whole package, right? That's what I wanted to make.
So, we have a motion in a second.
No, I mean, distance to that program, the top 10 programs, where is it offered? Is it offered out in, you know, Ellenworth Park? Is it Alfred in Norridge? Where are those top 10 programs offered? So that, because if I'm a parent, I'm looking at this list of 70 programs, and I'm thinking, I'm not going all the way out there. I'm going to, I'm going to choose a program that's closer.
We can reach out to the agencies and see if they know or they'll designate the top 10 programs.
And maybe it changes from season to season.
I'm sure it's seasonal. And again, it's still going to be situational because, and correct me if I'm wrong, but like if you want horseback riding, WSSR does not offer horseback ride. Oh, do you? Okay. Oh, everyone goes to Hanson?
Okay, let's, I think we're, folks, I think, I think, Ron, are you clear on what, what we're asking? Top 10 programs, cost comparison, transportation comparison, location where those programs are offered, correct?
Right, but we still have a motion in a second.
But I want to make sure.
You want me to withdraw my motion? If people feel like they don't want to hear from the Parks and Rec Board on this, if the majority, that's.
So, with the consensus then, we'll just ask Parks and Rec Department to do that and report back to us. Is that okay? So, you'll withdraw your motion, okay?
I think one other thing I would offer, and I volunteer myself and trustee Gisa, if desired, you know, we could help you focus the analysis and maybe give you some feedback before it's presented to the entire board. I know both of us have had conversations with a lot of people in the room. I don't have to do it, I'd be willing to do it, but if two of us can clearly be involved in that, if that's desirable.
We have a liaison too, so.
Okay, so we're clear? Okay, thank you, and thank all of you for coming today.
Thank you.
So, we're going to take a brief five-minute recess? Okay. Next up, under ordinances and resolutions, is a resolution of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to enter into an agreement with and issue a purchase order to Point B Communications for marketing plan and marketing consultancy services in an amount not to exceed $25,000. Director Adams.
Yes, as you know, we've been working with Point B Communications over the past couple of years to develop our brand and create a marketing plan. In 2017, the EDC was working with Point B on our brand articulation process, and that was brought before you in the fall. So, we have the kind of brand concept of get off the grid that was presented to you, and now we are looking to build on that with an actual marketing strategy. So, we had approximately $25,000 left in the marketing plan budget from 2017. And so, that was shifted to the 2018 budget to be able to move forward. Based on that budget, Point B is recommending employing a social media, both paid and organic, campaign to market the village. They believe this would be the most cost-effective strategy for the village, given this limited budget. A more sustained marketing strategy will prevent the village losing any momentum. A print media campaign, given our budget, would be fairly limited to a one-time event, and we would not be able to sort of build on any momentum that would be gained from that. Their proposal includes $15,000 for the social media campaign administration, $4,000 for creatives, and $6,000 for the paid media, for a total of $25,000. You have a copy of their proposal and the resolution that would authorize us to enter into the agreement and issue the purchase order to move forward this campaign. It would be a March 1st through May 31st campaign. With that timing, that kind of allows us to be able to gauge how that's going and kind of what sort of money can be put forward going into budgeting for 2019. And if, you know, if we're gaining good momentum, if the village board is open to any additional money being opened up to additional marketing campaign. If not, that's something certainly that Point B is ready to turn the reins over to staff and help us to be able to try to sustain it as best we can through the rest of fiscal year 2019.
So, I remember two issues from last time. One was, there was some concern amongst some folks about the off-the-grid concept. I think primarily because of a lot of the imagery that was, the mock-up that was presented to us, it was kind of stock footage. And also, an interest in trying to accentuate more our connection, rail connection to the city. Have they responded to those things in any?
We have provided them with some pictures that we have. We are also providing them with the raw files from our marketing video so that they have that footage to be able to work from, to be able to pull still images from and utilize in the campaign. So, hopefully, we'll be getting more images through those photographs and through that video for them to be able to use rather than using stock video footage. So, that's how we're kind of trying to work through that more cost-effectively. Certainly, as I'm meeting with them, and they already are aware that we do want to play on our. play on our proximity to the city and our rail line service, so that will definitely be part of what the, the campaign will be promoting.
Are we still on this off-the-grid thing? I mean, I, I know it was, everyone, they thought it was, I, I mean, I've heard from a lot of businesses that they did not think off-the-grid was necessarily a positive thing. I mean, I, I, you're, you're asking us to go right now, you, but we're being asked to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on something that I really don't even know what we're spending twenty-five thousand dollars on. A social media campaign, is it gonna pop up on my Facebook page?
Mm-hmm.
And what is it gonna pop up? Is it gonna pop up off-the-grid? Is it gonna pop up whatever? They, they haven't told us what they're gonna, I mean, they...
Well, that is, part of what the issue is, is they can't create a strategy, or they can't create a plan for you unless they know what their budget is to work with. And then they will craft something based on the money that you have to do a campaign. So what we are going to be doing is trying to put something together to move forward with on social media, albeit at this point, we're working on a very shortened timeframe. Maybe this has to get shifted to, at April first, to June first, depending on how quickly we can get things rolling. But the idea is to use the branding that we've come up with, with Get Off The Grid, our logo, the feel and everything that we decided on, and all of that will be implemented into our strategy. You know, as you can see in their campaign, you know, in their proposal, they're building off of our Point A document, what we say our strengths is, what we said that we wanted to identify. We wanna bring in visitors. We wanna bring in new, new businesses as well as new residents, but our primary focus on new businesses and visitors. So that is part of, what they will be focusing on is their crafting an actual campaign. I don't have an actual campaign for you, 'cause I've not authorized them to work on anything yet, based on you approving this money to be, to be spent. So we're kind of at a holding pattern until they can create something.
How much will it cost to present the campaign? I mean, I'd like to see what they're gonna do before we tell them to do, I mean, I don't, if it costs us five thousand dollars to, to, to put together an actual campaign that we know what we're paying for, then, then, then that money may be worth well spent. I don't want them to put together a campaign and all of a sudden find it on my Facebook page that I completely disagree with what's going on. I mean, I, 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 again, I, again, you, you look at our businesses, I don't know what business wants to be considered off-the-grid. I mean, that's the first thing I heard from businesses, is, I don't wanna be off-the-grid. I wanna be on the grid, but I understand where they're coming from.
It's the play, though. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is we're not on the grid. We are slightly off the beaten path, and we're...
Wait, wait, we're getting off the, we're... That conversation, that conversation has been had. You know, you might not like it, and some of our businesses might not like it, but that, the determination of, of that motif, I think, has been had. So the question is, are we, are we now gonna go to the next step, or just stop and lose everything that we've done?
What's your opinion?
I mean, I can certainly bring something to you.
That's, that's my opinion. What is, I mean, what is, what does everybody else add on that? I mean, it was my, my impression that the off-the-grid, certainly it had been chosen by the Economic Development Commission, and my impression was, is that we had signed off on it. That's why we're here. Is that right?
I agree.
It can suck forever. It's a campaign.
Right.
It's a campaign. We don't have to live with this forever. It was something distinctive that, that went into our branding. Christine Herbst, again, sorry, I wasn't gonna talk soon, but it, it's, it's part of our branding. This was the campaign we decided amongst the other ones that we had looked at, because we wanted something distinctive, but that still played with our branding. There were other more, you know, maybe safer options, but as, as you just mentioned, we went through all that discussion, and we decided to go with the one that we chose, and then we presented it to, to the board, so we voted on that one. So now we're at the point where we, we'd like to, we're, we'd like to roll over the money that we didn't use last year
Right.
into the eighteen budget. And so, but we need approval when you're going from calendar year to calendar year, and we can measure this campaign. If it doesn't work, that it doesn't work, you know, that we evaluate it at that point, you know? But we're doing this 'cause it's, it's what fits in the budget. If we, if we would use that money, like Sonia just said, we would spend that on one Chicago magazine ad.
Right.
And be done, and how can you measure one, one-time advertising? So this is a cost-effective...
And that was the recommendation, is creating a campaign that would be executed over social media with, you know, both paid and organic fees, with them administering it, them creating some creatives for us to be able to utilize in that, and them being able to do the feedback, monitor it, get those analytics that we would need to see kind of what's working on a month-to-month basis, and they can adjust things based on that. So, you know, they're looking to meet with me as soon as possible to get started on discussing how we move forward with this.
We don't wanna miss the spring. Springtime is important.
Other, other comments?
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with President Sells. I mean, I, I think I was the only person that thought that it was counterintuitive, and I think that it attracts residents, but not businesses, but that's besides the point. We proved it, so it's done. With regard to this twenty-five thousand dollars, I mean, I know that with my social media campaigns for my business, you know, it's an ongoing event. So you're talking about twenty-five thousand dollars right now, but where does that lead us to? I just don't know if it's fiscally responsible to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on a social media campaign, when, when, who's gonna manage that moving forward? I guess my question for you.
Right. At this point, our current social media is managed by myself, my assistant, and our IT analyst, as well as Chairperson Herbst. So we all have access to it on our current Facebook page, and we try to work through and promote that. So they are prepared to hand those reins over to us, to be able to try, to, to maintain it in the interim, and whatever money we have, if available, that we can do additional paid advertising, kind of based on what they have recommended. If we don't have the money for it, then we just work more with it in an organic fashion as opposed to doing those paid.
So what social media are we on? Snapchat, Instagram?
Right now, we are only on Facebook. We also have a village Twitter account as well. I don't know that that's used as much for economic development. What they're proposing is a Facebook page and an Instagram page, and so that would be the social media platforms that we would be moving forward with for this campaign.
But then they also, they'll, there's more longevity, though, too, because when they do do a social media campaign, it goes to a landing, a landing page, website page.
Right, so they would be making a landing page where they could...
So you would still have some residual value or, or whatever, you know what I mean? Still more lasting, you know, if they do, you know, like a restaurant, you know, campaign or something, that would still go online. You direct all your traffic there, and then that's how they'll be able to do all the SEO, search engine optimization, stuff like that, and we can keep that up as long as we want, 'cause you still may come up in searches and that kind of stuff from a campaign you did, you know, months ago.
Right.
Yes, the ideal thing is to keep, yes.
That's constant maintenance, but what we have available to us is to be able to sustain a three-month campaign.
So, so, again, this is, so, would it make more sense to invest the money in paying for paper clicks, or, you know, different, different things, that, different ways you can pay to have our information, the content that's already been prepared for us, that we've already paid for, to go on to different sites, right? Sites that, I mean, you can pay services to do that, and then they'll be, Riverside Off The Grid will pop up on this person that searches this particular thing. I mean, do we need them to do that? You can pay...
They can do that. What they felt was, given the amount of money that we have and the amount of kind of investment, time, management it takes to be doing that kind of thing, is kind of more than our, our budget bears, to have the most, most effect.
My question is, do we need them to do it? I mean, I mean, there's services that will light, I mean, it's pretty standard now, again, just in my experience, but, I don't know. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I, I think, I think that we're missing the point here. I, I think that when we, when we embarked on this, we all knew that this was going to be a long-term strategy. You know, to, to have, to, to come up to this point, where we've actually done all of the heavy lifting to get to where we are now, and then not use it, and not really, be willing to commit to an ongoing marketing strategy when we've finally gotten to this point, it seems to me we've thrown away all of the money that we spent to get here.
Yeah.
You know, and, and this, this, this is really where we finally see the rubber hit the road, for our, the first opportunity to see how it looks in real life. And then, after we see this, maybe your point is exactly correct, but you know what? We can do this. We can do this on our own.
Forget it in-house.
Right. Or we say, you know, that was really successful, let's target one at restaurants, or let's target one at the city, or let's target one at, you know, younger families, and we, we, this is gonna be forever. You don't ever, I mean, I have a business, too. Advertising never stops.
Right.
And you're always testing.
Right. You're always trying new ideas.
We just, we just need to make sure there's some benchmarking, so we know whether it's successful or not, when I just throw money in.
I think that's key for this particularly, because, and that's what I liked about this social media option, because it sounds like we will get hard, concrete numbers, and then we can know whether it's, it's working or we need to change course. And my understanding with some of these social media platforms is that, that we can even gauge that information after Point B would be involved. Is that correct?
So we still have, you know, as, as a manager of our current Facebook page, you know, we're provided with analytics on there, so you can see, you know, how far your reach is, how many clicks you're getting, how much time people are actually spending on your page. You can get that kind of information. Additionally, you can get that information for our webpage, so if it's being directed to a landing page on our webpage, you know, we can grab those analytics from there, so we can see what kind of traction we're getting, how long people are engaging, how they're engaging, what type of posts are more effective than others, and so, you know, they're very much driven by the analytics as well. So that's one of the things that in there, they say that they, they look at as they gauge how they're going to keep moving forward, what, what are they going to pay for ad-wise, you know, each month, is based on kind of the analytics that they're getting, and so those would be analytics we would be able to use as well, so.
And I think also comparing if we can utilize Point B for these three months, and comparing their analytics to when we're doing it, to see what value is there. I think you're trying, you're talking about the value of using a professional firm to do this as opposed to doing it in-house. And my, my point is, if we can see the value between this three-month period and the three or, you know, we can analyze those two and compare those two, we can see what we're getting for that fifteen thousand dollars that they're, you know, that they're charging for the administration fees.
So that's for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Mr. Pollak, second. Mr. Gisa, further discussion. Call the role, please.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Longstreet.
Aye.
Trustee DeAvery.
Aye.
Trustee Sun.
Aye.
Trustee Hughes.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Next up is a resolution adopting the Village of Riverside, Riverside TV Community Programming Guidelines. Ms. Francis.
This is the first type of policy document of its type for Riverside TV. The role of Riverside TV has evolved over the years. In addition to broadcasting village board meetings, RTV now broadcasts Riverside District, School District Ninety-Six meetings, Riverside Township meetings, and other community events. The request for RTV will continue to increase in a policy outlining programming guidelines where RTV is necessary. The guidelines mirror the policy that is utilized by Western Springs, Indian Head Park, LaGrange and LaGrange Park. The village is a member of West Central Cable Agency, which these communities are also a member of. The policy will assist in managing the expectations of those requesting RTV services, while also outlining costs and ownership of content, a lot of residents, or even those that are making requests of RTV don't realize that the village has to stay, fulfill requirements with the state archives with managing certain content and documents, whether it's filming or documents just in general. There's certain content that we have to make sure that we're managing and retaining for records retention purposes, and videos also falls under that purview. And so, making sure that we have a policy outlining what the guidelines are, and residents and organizations recognizing that this is, if RTV is doing the filming, it's actually the content of the Village of Riverside is important as well. I'll, I, any questions of the village board with regard to this? This, like I said, mirrors policy, the policy in which West Central Cable Agency created specifically for LaGrange, LaGrange Park, Western Springs, and Indian Head Park, because LT actually does all the filming for those particular agencies, with the exclusion, I'm sorry, of Western Springs, but they do assist in broadcasting for various community events for those communities. So I did receive some feedback from RTV. They did review the policy. They had the suggestion of adding in cost for reimbursement for travel. So if we're going to do filming, and we have to go to a, a location that is outside of essentially the township hall, that we would receive reimbursement for the costs associated with it. So that was the suggestion. They just had their meeting on Monday, so that's why it's not incorporated in this document.
My, my only count, I think it's great. I, I think, I think we should have a much higher deposit, and I think we should bill more per hour. I, I cannot believe that fifty dollars an hour covers our costs. To me, it barely covers the labor.
Correct. So if you're talking about other administrative costs of booking, like...
Equipment and...
Equipment, so when you receive the application, review of the application, staff time for billing, no, it does not cover that.
I think it should.
What we could do is increase the rate, then my suggestion, if we're trying to capture those costs, would, to increase it to seventy-five dollars, but then also with the caveat that it would increase annually by CPI, because usually that's right around where our operating costs increase by. Sometimes it's a little bit more, but overall, that's what we try to target.
I still think that's, that's cheap, but that's in the right direction for it.
I, I, I agree and I disagree, and so I'm gonna take, manage both my bets. I think this is a great document. It's a result of our, of our success, and I'm very proud of Riverside TV. What you've guys done in the last five years is, is amazing. When it comes to charging, I, 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 the commission looks very, very hard at, at what they charge, and they weigh the fact of what they charge versus the service that they, 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 they serve. So if we over, if we charge, I mean, you, you gotta look at the money as also being part of a, you know, we do the omsteads aside. We don't wanna price ourselves out of being able to do some of that stuff. We wanna make sure that we, we can do everything that we're doing now and, and continue to do that. I, I would, I, I think if the cable commission is, is good with the prices, then, then, then we should be, we should be good with the prices. But I, I do agree, maybe we should look at this on a yearly basis, see how they do. I mean, they look at it very, they look at the end of the year, how many shoots they've had, how much it costs, labor and things like that. I mean, we can, we can adjust this on a yearly basis if we find that it's not, not moving in the right direction.
Do you, are we going, are you suggesting that we don't incorporate the recommendation of the cost of travel?
Oh, I, no, I, I, I agree with that.
But you take a, if you take an average Floss lecture, it's gonna add seventy-five dollars for a three-hour setup, lecture, teardown.
I think we have to cover all the costs.
And then the CPI makes it easy. We don't have to redo this every year then.
Right.
What does everybody else think?
If the fifty does not cover overhead-type costs, then I think it should. You know, if it doesn't, if it only covers labor, but doesn't cover wear and tear and things like that.
Well, the question is, is it, I mean, we're gonna have wear and tear on stuff, so how do we recapitalize? Is that just, is that something that has to be budgeted then in our main budget?
Well, a lot of that, a lot of the, the capital equipment comes to us through...
The cable agency.
The cable agency.
Correct.
So that's not actually...
So that's not gonna impact us from a budget perspective, right? And that's why I wanted to answer the question, 'cause I think we, it's nice if something like that can cover its costs.
Right.
It's easy to justify that, and it doesn't become a target. It's easy to justify that, and it doesn't become a target in the conversations we're going to have some soon time down the road, right?
So, the other question I have is, under the eligibility, we are specifying that it has to be a 501(c)(3). Are we, are we eliminating anybody that we don't want to eliminate by stipulating that it has to be a 501(c)(3) that anybody can think of? And the only other question I had...
Could they still come to the, I mean, I guess they would come, if they, if there was an organization that didn't meet that, would they come here?
They could waive it, or...
I mean, how would, how would we address it, I guess, if it, if there was an organization?
Well, for example, there's a 501(c)(4) organization that wanted us to take the candidates forum, but which you were a part. And, you know, the decision, the staff decision was, and I agree with this decision, is that it was being sponsored by an organization that is overtly political.
Right.
Same thing tonight, they wanted us to take the forum tonight. So, you know, that, I don't want staff to be put in the position where they have to make that decision.
Sure.
I want us to make that decision and say, we don't want tax dollars being spent for partisan broadcasting.
And at that point, they should go hire a video company to do it and publish it, right?
I'm just, I'm just wondering, if they come to us, is that the, is that the recourse?
They could.
Is that, is that the recourse?
If there was some group that, right, we could always, we could always...
I would agree, not going to staff. I mean, it should, it should be clean-cut. But if someone, if an organization that wasn't under 501(c)(3) wanted to seek this for one reason, and brought their concerns here, we would be the ones to address that issue.
You can do anything you want. You're trusted.
Not me. I didn't want it published, but I'm, I'm just wondering how procedure would be at that point.
I would think that way.
I think it's better to be narrow, start narrow, if we miss something, we can amend it.
And on page 120, the last bullet point, should that be an affiliation, or was it intended to be any affiliation with any political party?
I think it's okay, is it?
The way it is, okay. Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion, a second, to approve the resolution.
President Sells, do you want to add a sentence that says for requests outside of the policy that you can come to the Village Board?
That's fine.
And I would suggest that it be 60 days before requested filming day, because RTV requests 30 days in advance notice for this. So if we're trying to get it before the Village Board, it would need to be 60 days at a minimum.
Is that a fit there, right?
I prefer to leave that out.
Okay.
Leave it out?
Yeah. I don't see any reason to put it in there. We can amend this code anytime we want.
But I guess the good part is to let people know that they have the option.
But what would, what would we...
Everybody has the option.
So you're saying if there's a 501(c) that is not politically affiliated, if there's a 501, an entity that's not a 501(c)...
Or one that doesn't have a designation.
Right.
You know, some, some local group that, you know, that could make a compelling argument that this is something that is yours to the benefit of the community, if you would like to have it.
Right, right, so Kathy, yeah, Kathy suggested the Chamber of Commerce may not be affiliated.
They're not, they are not a 501(c).
Right.
Right. So...
So then they would come, and we'd waive it like we waived anything else, if we have a variance.
Right, so you certainly don't need, you don't need to put it in.
Text him.
You have that a problem.
Okay. Did I get a motion in a second?
Did we, what did we decide on cost? Did we say 75?
Seventy-five with CPI, and we're also going to add the cost for travel. Okay.
I do not have a motion.
Okay, so I need a motion, a second, to approve.
So moved.
By Mr. Ballerin.
Second.
By Mr. Setteby, please call the roll.
Trusty Pollack.
Aye.
Trusty Giesa.
Aye.
Trusty Lumsen.
Aye.
Trusty Dalloway.
Aye.
Trusty Sudden.
Aye.
Trusty Peter. Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is a very similar situation, but this is a resolution adopting a Village of Riverside social media comment policy. There was one, did you want to...
Yeah, I can go through it really quick. We have established multiple social media accounts, however, the one thing that we didn't establish when we embarked on this journey was actual guidelines with regard to commenting. We have other mechanisms in which residents can post comments or work orders within a Riverside response. We need to make sure that we have a policy in place to make sure that if a person violates said policy, that we can then remove said comments. So this policy, and also, the village will be unveiling a Facebook site, a Facebook page in the future, and so this is important to have before unveiling that.
Can you all read it? Any comments?
I just have a couple. The second page, I don't think any elected village officials should be, should be posting on Facebook page, on the village's Facebook page. I think that should be a management, you know, administration or a staff. I think it can cause us issues if, I mean, if we have opinions, I don't necessarily like the fact that my opinion can't be heard. So I just, I just think it's better that we, we don't have any of our officials post on Facebook pages.
And I'm fine with that, because as, as of now, the only time that I ever respond to any kind of thing on social media is always a factual response. I have never gotten into like a debate or a policy discussion with anybody online. It's always been a question about snow plowing, or a question about, you know, some infrastructure thing, which certainly can be handled better by, directly by staff, and then we eliminate that, that issue. We're here. I mean, people can reach us anytime they want to reach us, if they want to know where we stand, but, but I, I think, I agree with that, that we should let staff handle the responding.
Any other comments? Ask for a motion, a second, to approve.
So moved.
I have one, sorry, not to comment. So on the second page, it says that if the visitor violates the village's social media comment policies, the village can remove the content and terminate or block the visitor's access. And so that's, I mean, it's not just removing content, you're, you're not allowing someone to post anymore on the village website. And so when I look at that, I then look back at the things that you can do to violate the comment, the policy guidelines, and some of them are a little subjective to me, like content that is disturbing, content deemed to be, quote, inappropriate, or otherwise contrary to the purposes of the village's social media accounts. And I, I just get concerned when I see that language, the kind of more subjective fluffy language, and then we're prohibiting someone from recognizing this is not a public forum, that the, the Facebook page is, is property of Riverside, and it's not a public forum, but I'm just concerned about that. I don't have a suggestion for, I mean, other than, other than maybe changing...
Yeah, content that is disturbing, what is that?
Right, so, so, you know, it, it's like a lot of things, it's hard to define something like that, but I did have an opportunity to talk to Trusty Peters during the break and about this issue. So one of the things that we, to try to give something more body that we sometimes do in the law, to try to make it more objective, is to use a reasonable person standard. So what if we set content that would be considered disturbing and inappropriate, or in poor taste by a reasonable person? And that, you know, you're still not exactly defining something, but it's better than just saying disturbing.
I mean, that's...
The key is, is to be able to take it off if it's going to hurt or harm someone else, and that's why the language is there. So the stronger it is, the better.
Right, so we don't want to leave it out.
That's right.
Are you okay with that, Trusty Peters?
Our business has the same language.
I mean, that's typical, reasonable standard.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, and, so, and this is at the village manager's discretion, correct?
And I assume she wouldn't be banning people for...
Pretty reasonable.
Right. I recognize, I recognize...
But again, if you overreached her bounds and it came back to us, then we as a board would have to deal with that.
Right, right.
Because I can't say that it's disturbing to Jessica. That's against...
Because we'd all be terminated.
We'd never...
Okay, I, I'm happy with that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have a motion by Mr. Setteby.
Second.
Second one, Mr. Ballerin, call the roll.
Trusty Pollack.
Aye.
Trusty Giesa.
Aye.
Trusty Lumsen.
Aye.
Trusty Dalloway.
Aye.
Trusty Sudden.
Aye.
Trusty Peter. Aye.
Motion carries. And last but not least is a discussion of the community garden. Director Mounty, you're back.
Good evening. Just as an update, you have the agenda history sheet in front of you, but just a quick background. This was originally introduced at public comment at a village board meeting, was then discussed at the Parks and Recreation Board level. We met with several residents who presented drawings, design drawings of a garden, and also explained the benefits of it. They suggested two locations, Indian Gardens or Patriots Park. So we looked at those locations. We also looked at what the request was, and it was, in addition to requesting land, they were also requesting village services, whether it be some commitment to watering or maintenance, things of that nature. So it, it kind of extended past the discussion of just allowing land. So at the, staff did research each location and designated the challenges that would be, that would be presented at each location. The biggest would be the dedicated water line, of which there is none at either location, and that would be, what I'm told from Director Ed Bailey at Public Works, is it would be a minimum of $10,000, and it could be upwards from there. That wasn't an expense that this group was willing to pay, so that's when it veered into staff efforts, whether we could provide watering, things of that nature. Director Ed Bailey also was generous enough to offer nine rain barrels to, to a location if approved, but they still wanted more of a commitment from, from village staff and their efforts. So what we, even though those were all discussed and designated, the discussion, or I guess the question posed amongst the Parks and Recreation Board was philosophically, do you want to approve the allocation for Parks and Playground land for any use outside its original intent? And the majority of the board voted no. So that is, so that was the recommendation, based on the information we had, and that's what's before you now.
And just to follow up on that, when, you know, when this idea first, first arose, you know, Manager Francis and I, we could not have been clear that, that the village did not have staff or resources to run one of these things. And so as it went along, it morphed into this, you know, we need water, we need you to build this, we need you to do this, and we simply don't have the resources to do it. Another issue that, that I thought was, was relevant is the idea of providing taxpayer-funded property for private garden to use for private consumption. I mean, it would have been a different issue, I think, if we were talking about a community garden that was going to enter to the benefit of, you know, a food bank or something like that. But the way this, this kind of morphed, it became something where somebody was going to pay a fee, and then have a, have a plot that they were going to grow their own personal produce on, with basically a village subsidy, you know, of water and, so that's, so I, you know, that's, that's kind of where this all kind of ended up. So the question is, is do we, I guess, do we agree with the Parks and Recreation Board that this is not something that we want to use dedicated parkland for?
I'll make a motion to agree with the decision at Parks and Recreation Board. Second.
Second, Mr. Giesa, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Trusty Pollack.
Aye.
Trusty Giesa.
Aye.
Trusty Lumsen.
Aye.
Trusty Ballerin.
Aye.
Trusty Peter.
Aye.
Motion carries. We do have a need for a short executive session to discuss availability of property. If that, I might ask for a motion to adjourn. Not to... Decision could be made.
Second.
Second, first, the motion by Mr. Lumsen, second by Mr. Ballerin, please call the roll.
Trusty Pollack.
Aye.
Trusty Giesa.
Aye.
Trusty Lumsen.
Aye.
Trusty Ballerin.
Aye.
Trusty Sudden.